and truly served, and thy good purposes for the common human life be realized in our midst. Oh God, grant us a vision of our country, fair as it might be, a country of righteousness, where none shall wrong his neighbor, a country of plenty, where evil and poverty shall be done away with, a country of brotherhood, where all success shall be founded on service, and honor shall be given to the deserving, a country of peace, where government shall rest on the will of the people and the love for the common good. Bless the efforts of those who struggle to make this vision a living reality, inspire and strengthen our people, that they may give time, thoughts, and sacrifice to speech the day of the coming beauty of Ghana and Africa. Amen.
Good morning, Honorable Minister and other Ministers and colleague members of Parliament. We are happy to have you here today. Meeting for today is in respect of the public accounts, the Audit General's report on the public accounts of Ghana for the ministries, departments, and agencies for the year ended thirty-first December twenty twenty-four. And in that year, I happened to be in government, and so I will sit the chairmanship of today's proceedings to the ranking member, and I know you do a good job. And so, ranking member, I hand it over to you. And today, we're looking at quite a number of ministries. So when you come, just go straight to the point and let's finish. All we want is how best you have attended to the infractions that you have been cited for. And so, ranking, I know you do a good job. I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much, madam. The first minister will be the Fisheries Ministry. Clerk, could you administer the oath, please?
Aye.
Aye, Emilia Arthur.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the members of parliament will introduce themselves and we'll start the business. And may we start from Nasee, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Nano Seaji, and a member of the committee. I'm representing the good people of New York enough.
Shelly Chee, Member of Parliament for Atrumanwebeja South in the Ashanti region, and a member of the committee.
Good morning, Chair. Name is Duke Oforiata, Member of Parliament for Antekwa South, and a member of the committee.
Okay, my name is Samuel Attamills, MP for Comenda Edina Igwafu Abrem, and ranking by chair in this team today. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Predrick Ahenkwa Iaw, Member of Parliament for Yarmouth North, Member of the Committee.
Hello, good morning. My name is Akwesi Kenedu, the Member of Parliament for Manisha North constituency in the Ashanti region, and a member of the committee.
My name is Abno Sayasari, Member of Parliament for Itua East and the Chairperson for the Committee.
My name is Michael Martin. The clap to the committee. Thank you.
I'm Delabi, Member of Parliament for Lower Manya Krabo, and a Deputy Minister.
Muntakamobarak, Member of Parliament for Aswansi, and for this earlier session, a friend to the committee.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. My name is Shahadu Sadeh Cambala, Assistant Auditor General, and a member of the audit team. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. My name is Michael Addo, Assistant Auditor General, Audit Service.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. My name is Mrs. Elorukanti, Director of Audit, Audit Service.
Okay, just to let you know, we are live on GTV, we are live on Facebook, we are live on Parliament's own television channel. And so, that will serve as well. Honorable Minister, introduce yourself and then your team, please.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. My name is Emilia Arthur. I work as a Minister for Fisheries and Aquaculture, a Member of Parliament for Shama. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Ebo Mensah, Administrator, National Premix Four Secretaryate.
My name is Prosper Agbano, Accountant, National Premix Four Secretaryate. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rosemary Abbey, Director of Finance and Administration.
Good morning. My name is Mubarak Idris, the Internal Auditor of the Ministry of Fisheries and Aquaculture.
Okay, Honorable Minister, you have one infraction, which is on paragraph seventeen seventy-two. And Honorable Nasee Aji will take care of that infraction.
Honorable Chair, we were left with one introduction.
Who is that, please?
Honorable Chair, my name is Reverend Solomon Otu, Financial Controller, Finance Director, and Minister of Fisheries.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Minister, this is payment of unearned salaries. Regulation ninety-two of the Public Financial Management Regulation two thousand and I requires that the principal spending officer of a covered entity shall ensure the immediate stoppage of payment of salary to public servants and notify the controller and accountant general on the resignation or retirement of an employee, of an employee. May I find out whether you have been able to recover this amount?
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Yes, the recommendation has fully been adhered to, and there has been full recovery together with interest that has been paid. And we have the appendices here to confirm that that has been done. Thank you.
Please, auditors, can you confirm this to us, please?
Honorable Chair, the assertion is accurate. Thank you.
Honorable Minister, thank you. Your team is discharged. May we call Sports College, please? National Sports College.
Aye.
Aye.
Usman Oke Amuakwa. Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please introduce yourself to the committee.
Honorable Chairman, my name is Wohel Minasama. I'm the Chief Director for Ministry of Sports and Recreation. Thank you.
Honorable Chairman.
My name is Bawa Fosain, Acting Director, University of Sports College.
My name is Usman Oke Amuakwa, Head of Finance, Sports College.
Honorable Chair, my name is Repetral Tivia, Director of Accounts, Ministry of Sports and Recreation.
Honorable Chair, my name is Abdul Karim Tosha, Director, Internal Audit, Ministry of Sports and Recreation.
Honorable Chair, my name is Issam Ahmida, Director, Policy Planning, Budgeting, Monitoring and Evaluation, Ministry of Sports and Recreation.
All right, your infraction. Your first infraction is on paragraph twenty-three-six, and Honorable Abna Osaya Sari will take care of that one.
Thank you very much. It has to do with unrecovered staff advances. All we want is whether it's been recovered and your latest duly certified that it's been done.
And about the first, the Director of the Sports College to answer the question.
Honorable Chairman, all that money has been recovered and duly paid to the appropriate quarters.
Can the auditors please confirm?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been recovered.
Okay, the next infraction is on paragraph twenty-eighteen, and it's about unaccounted funds, forty-seven thousand. What has happened to it?
Honorable Chairman, that too has been recovered fully.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Honorable Chair, it was accounted for. There is a difference between recovery and accounting for the payment. So what was done actually was they accounted for the payment. They provided documents to support the payment.
All right, let's go to the next one. It's an unremitted withheld taxes of fifty-four thousand. How about that?
It is also have been remitted to the Ghana Revenue Authority, sir.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Exactly so, Mr. Chairman. The amount has been remitted.
All right, now we go to unremitted Tier Two pension contributions, five thousand three hundred and thirty-two.
That one too have been, have been, have been remitted to the scheme, sir.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been remitted.
The next infraction is on paragraph twenty-three-one, unremitted pay as you earn, of four thousand four hundred and forty-five.
It too has been remitted to the Ghana, to the Ghana Revenue Authority.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Exactly so, Honorable Chair.
All right, thank you. You are discharged. Hold on, hold on for a minute.
I want to find out from you when you discharged your mandate to the auditors. When you went to the auditors with all the documents, that the relevant documents that they needed.
Honorable Chairman, it was not done in one, in one bit. We're doing it as we received that document. So we did it over time.
As you received it, when you had already engaged the, the amounts?
No, we, we remitted it on the eleventh of June, eleven December.
Eleven December of?
Twenty twenty-four.
And when did they leave your end?
No, it was done by the accountant.
I'm asking, when did the auditors leave your end? Usually, when they come for the audits, they give you some time and then they give you thirty days to also respond to all the queries that they have raised. And I'm asking you, why they couldn't finish your data with all these documents before that time? You come here, you've done everything right. Is it because you are coming to public accounts that you've done everything right? When the auditors came to you, why didn't you do the right thing if you had all these documents?
No, Madam.
Were they manufactured?
No, no, no.
So why didn't you give it to the auditors?
We were not there at that time, but when we came and saw the infraction, we started working on the infraction based on improvement on our internal internal controls. So we came and met there, but we worked so hard to ratify all these infractions.
You came in December, and then you finished them with the documents in December?
No, I came, I went there in October.
October twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
And the auditors had gone or had left there?
Yeah, the, this audit is June, June twenty twenty-three to July twenty twenty-four.
Yes, I'm aware.
Yes.
And they had left?
Yes, please.
As you've told us today, God willing, next year, we hope you wouldn't be cited for these same infractions. And then you come and tell me that you have put internal controls in place and you don't know why it happened the way it did. Thank you.
I can show the chairman.
All right, you are discharged. Now let's call Ministry of Interior. Honorable Minister, have your people taken their oath yet? Sorry. Clerk, could we make sure that they all get, they all take their oath?
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Honorable Minister, could you and your leaders introduce yourselves, please?
Oh, Laura. Madame Chair, Members of the House. Yes, I'm Muntakamobarak, the Minister for Interior. To my extreme left is Dr. Koyon, the-
Could you let them introduce themselves, please?
Oh, okay. So maybe we start from the extreme left.
My name is Dr. Bekanyukuyon, Director General and Admiral.
Honorable Chair, please. My name is Daniel Amosin Tosapun, the Acting Chief Officer.
Honorable Director General of Prisons, Patients, Baffo Horn.
Honorable Chair, my name is Christian Tetevunu, Inspector General of Police. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, my name is Dorin Peiny Anan, Acting Chief Director, Ministry of the Interior.
Honorable Chair, my name is Delabi, Deputy Minister, Interior.
Honorable Chair, my name is Samuel Basintalia Madu, Acting Controller, General of Immigration.
Honorable Chair, my name is Emmanuel Sisiquenu, Acting Gaming Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister and your delegation. Your first infraction is on paragraph eighteen seventeen, and it's under Ghana Gaming, uh, Gaming Commission of Ghana.
Yes, the, the commissioner is here, and then he will provide answers, and then where there's a need for me to do the feeling, then I'll come in.
Thank you very much. Honorable Akwesi Kenedu will handle that one, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Mister, welcome. This has to do with an investment you made in twenty nineteen with the SIC FSL Financial Services Limited to the tune of about five million one hundred and sixty-five thousand Ghana Cedis. And as of now, you've not been able to redeem the principal amount, neither the interest associated with it. And the auditors recommended that you recover this amount. How much of this amount has been recovered?
Honorable Chair, when I assumed office, even before the infraction was brought to my notices, I wrote to the SIC Financial Services Limited demanding payment for the investment that we made. They wrote back saying that their, their investments have been escrowed at the Ministry of Finance, and that in the letter that they even wrote to me, they asked for my assistance to retrieve it. I wrote back to, I've written two times. I've also met with them together with the audit committee of the Gaming Commission, asking them that the amount is very significant and that we need to recover it for other purposes for the Gaming Commission. Up to now, they haven't done much. They are a government institution, we are a government institution. So I wrote to my minister, soliciting his view on it, and I was advised to write to the Attorney General's Office to seek advice on how to recover that amount.
Sir, did you say, they said their investment has been escrowed at the Ministry of Finance?
Yeah, that's what they are saying.
Or they were seeking support from the Ministry of Finance?
Yeah, they are, they are saying that, you know, following the bank, uh, following the collapse of the banking institutions, the collapse of some banking institutions or some investment institutions, they were affected. Therefore, they are unable to pay the money back to the Gaming Commission. They said they have written to the Ministry of Finance for them to release the funds, for them to pay us. But up to now, they haven't received anything from the Ministry of Finance.
Do you have a copy of the letter you wrote and the response that they brought you?
Yes, please.
Has that been shown to the auditors?
I've given it to the auditors.
When?
Uh, when they wrote to us during their final, this and our money meeting, I finished them with all the letters that I've written to them together with, uh, together with our meetings and other things that we've done with them.
Did they acknowledge you having that investment with them?
Yeah, they did.
And acknowledged the balance of that figure?
Yes, please. They did acknowledge that they owe the Gaming Commission, but that they are unable to pay.
Auditors, do you have copies of these correspondence between the Gaming Commission and SIC FSL?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we have cited those correspondences.
Madame Chair, can I, can I say something there? I mean, I'm sure that the banking collapse and the challenges of it is not new to any of us. So for me, yes, we must receive the money, but this is something that affected almost everybody, including many of us who are sitting around the table. So auditors insist that Gaming Commission should find the money. It's like saying the government must find money to pay everybody. So what I then did was I said, look, let's write to Attorney General to advise us based on this, what should we do, which we have written. If the Attorney General says that we should go and seize the asset, at least we are lucky we have the police with us, so it will be easy to do. But because it's also a government institution, and as I know that many citizens of our country have suffered this, the fate of the collapse of the banks, and many have not received their money. It's a big issue that is that you don't have a straight answer to reach until those are resolved completely. For those institutions to be able to pay back all their indebtedness, it will be very difficult for you to say that Gaming Commission should do everything whom are not possible to get the money. But we've written to Attorney General, hoping that the advice he will give us may help us to retrieve the money. Thank you so much.
Minister, I'm, I'm glad you said you've written to the AG, the Attorney General. So the Attorney General responded to that. But as far as I know, SIC FSL is, was in a different situation altogether before all this banking issue started. So I'm glad you have written to the AG. So I don't want to say anything because of the, the knowledge I have. But you have written to AG, so we'll leave it at that and wait for AG to respond. But I must put on record that SIC FSL was in a different situation altogether before the banking issues, the, the debt restructuring started. So that must be on record. Yes.
Okay, madam, since you've said that, let's move on to the next one. The next infraction is paragraph eighteen twenty-one, unpaid license renewal fees. And Madame Abna Osaya Sari will take that one, eighteen twenty-one.
Gaming Commission, what is the process that one needs to take to renew license for, for the work they do, as in those betting companies, the gaming operators? What is the process that they have to go through?
Gaming operators, when their license lapses, what they do is that they notify the Gaming Commission. We even do the notification first, three months prior to the expiration of their license, and then we ask them to come and renew. We do that with, listen, we send them notices, and then if they indicate that they want to renew, then we send them their bills. And then they do come and then renew. That, that is a normal process. If they satisfy or require- That is a normal process, if they satisfy all requirements.
So that if they are operating and they haven't renewed, must it be the auditors' business to come and point it out to you that their licenses have expired and they need to renew them?
No, please.
And so why did we allow more than twenty, about twenty-six gaming operators to operate with expired licenses, to the tune of fourteen million Ghana Cedis?
Madam Chair, welcome in. I know the infractions dates back to, dates back from twenty twenty-three. It wasn't even twenty twenty-four alone, twenty twenty-three.
Respectfully, when we come here, we don't care when the infraction began.
I know, but I'm.
Ours is to make sure, please hold on. Ours is to make sure that you have been cited for a particular infraction. What have you done about it?
Okay.
That is how we go about it.
Okay, I'm going to address that.
So go straight to that.
When we got the infraction of fourteen million plus, what we did was that we realized that we need to do a reconciliation with auditors. We did that. So we found out that the money wasn't actually fourteen, it was nine point something million. Following that, we have sent out demand notices, and six point seven million Cedis have been recovered, leaving a balance of two point eight million. We still pursuing them. We still pursuing them. Out of the number, the twenty-nine, about five of them have ceased operations. But we will recover the two point eight million outstanding before the end of this year. That's an assurance from me.
You have done all this, and this is what you have to tell us? Not whether you were not here and it did not happen under your watch? When you take up a responsibility, you inherit both the liability and the assets. And so, sir, I want to find out from you if currently there are some who are operating without renewing their licenses. Currently, there are some, out of the five that you said they have halted their business and they are no more operating. How about those who are still operating? Do we still have some who are yet to renew their licenses?
We have pursued them.
Yes or no first, please?
No.
No?
No.
So all those operating are operating with a renewed license?
Yes, please.
Currently, as we speak?
Yes, Chair.
Okay. Auditors, can you please confirm the amount they have retrieved?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we did a reconciliation with them. The amount was revised to nine million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand and fifty-two Cedis point seven-three. Then what has actually been recovered is six million seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and forty Cedis point zero-three. So what we have outstanding
Yes.
is a difference between the nine million and the
And the six.
The six point seven eight million. I can do that calculation and give it to you.
Oh, no, that's about two point three, so that's fine.
So two point eight?
Two point eight.
Two point eight million.
Okay. So, sir, when should we expect you to clear the two point eight? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Madam Chair, respectfully, I agree with you that governance is continuous. But, I mean, you and I have been in this house for long. I think we may have to amend our laws to hold the specific persons who are there to come and answer. Why am I saying this? This is an infraction, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. Someone was sitting there and acted irresponsibly.
Minister?
Sorry.
You could have brought them.
Let me finish.
It's given, it's there, so you could have asked them to come.
No, the person, the person is no longer in office.
Yes, but you could have asked them to come.
Because it's not.
If you had written to them and you shown us proof that you have written to them, yes.
Unless we intend, unless we are going to be arresting people and dragging them here. Because I can tell you that in this case, when some of them came, I asked that, can you call, I know the next one. For example, that has to do with somebody who went on scholarship or something. I know it will come. And we are asking that, can you get the CEO to answer? I mean, some of the tricky answers is, look, you inherited the place, moved the assets and the liability, deal with the liability. He came to office in February, and with three months, he was able to retrieve that money. Someone was there, he was giving the management notice showing this infraction. He sat throughout that period, he never retrieved a dime. Yet now five of the companies are, what do you call it, have gone defunct. And the amount of money in their name, madam, it is better we tell the committee the truth. Those companies, that amount of money in their name cannot be retrieved because they are no longer in existence. Our effort is that even if they have changed their name or if they haven't changed business, we'll try and pursue them. But so long as those companies are defunct, those monies that are in their name cannot be retrieved. So I've told him yesterday, you better do the arithmetic, identify the five that are defunct, and be able to tell the auditors that this one, they are no longer in existence. So therefore, you better treat it as bad debt rather than give some false hope that I'll go and retrieve it. Because you will not be able to retrieve that money because they are no longer in existence. So I think that that's clear. But when they do those reconciliations with the auditors, those that are still in operation, we can assure you that we'll do everything to retrieve the amount. But we're not able to tell how much it is because they have to do the reconciliation with the auditors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Minister. Minister, the person in charge said, he gave us a year, he said, he, end of the year or so. Did you say you are going to finish the two point eight end of the year?
Yeah, I didn't say, I didn't say that, but.
Did you say that, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay. Minister, this is not the first time.
Unfortunately, Chair, with greater respect. You see, some of them don't know what parliamentary process is. You come to a committee of parliament and you say, by the end of the year, I'm going to retrieve that money. I don't, yeah, you don't come giving excuses. Maybe he has forgotten the lesson I gave him yesterday. I told him that when you come to the committee of parliament, you tell them the full of your truth. That's the oath you just saw. Those five that are collapsed, you cannot retrieve that money. And that money is part of the two point eight. But unfortunately, they've not segregated to know the exact amount, which are tasks that they should do with the auditors so that they know, out of the two point eight, how much of it is of the five companies that are no longer in existence? And treat that as something that cannot be retrieved. So that you know that what is left, that has to be retrieved, then you can pursue those ones and retrieve them.
Thank you very much, Minister. For that, there's a process, and they know the process. If they find out from the auditors, they will tell them how to write off these things. You do the process, it comes to parliament, and then parliament gives you that permission to write off a public, there's a public amount that is sitting in your books. So that process, work with the auditors. If clearly, there's no way you can trace these five companies, they don't have any assets that you can rely on, you go through the process with the guidance of the auditors and your minister, I believe you can go, you can get it to parliament, and then parliament can write it off. But like the minister said, you tell us the whole truth and nothing but the truth. And so that when we are also putting it into our reports, we know that what we are sending to the floor of parliament for debate is the truth and nothing but the truth. But I must say that you have done well because you had a debt of nine million, and you have been able to reduce it to less than three million. And so clearly, I was going to commend you for that. But the way you started that in twenty, I came in twenty, it was in twenty twenty-three, that was, that was no-go area. But I must say that you have done very well because within a short period of time, you have been able to reduce the debt by more than seventy percent. And so keep it up. But my, my issue is this. As you are there, make sure you don't build up on license renewal moving forward. As you are there, make sure you don't build up on license renewal. We want, the next time the auditors come, we don't want any unpaid license renewal in your books. Because I can see that you know how to take money from people. So use that, use that gift that you have to make sure you retrieve anything that belongs to the Gaming Commission. On this note, I'll end here. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just add this? I mean, we've been trying to digitalize almost all the services under the ministry. And I'm very hopeful that maybe by the course of the year, working with the G R A, will be done with that of Gaming Commission. Sad that when your license expires, we'll take you off. So we may not even have this issue, but, you know, what do you call it? Advice is well taken. Thank you so much.
Honorable Minister, I also need to commend Gaming Commission. Right now, the management now for doing such a great job retrieving some of the money that was left in the past. And this should be a warning to those who thought maybe because they are not there, we will not go after them. We'll go after them. We'll go after them. In fact, I would have loved it, Minister, I would have loved it if we had known the names of those people who left that mess. So that we mention it on air, that you, you left that mess over there, somebody's cleaning up for you. But let's move on. The next infraction is on paragraph eighteen twenty-five, and Honorable Clitoris will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction is on unserved bond term to the tune of four hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and ninety-one Ghana Cedis. Director. Director, one Moses Tey Mensa, who went on steady leave with P E T and was supposed to serve the Gaming Commission, resigned immediately after his studies on the thirtieth of January twenty twenty-five, without serving the three years bond, and also failed to pay the compensation extended to him during the steady leave with P E P R O D, calculated to be the amount I mentioned earlier, including interest. Where is Mr. Mensa?
Honorable Chair, I have written severely to Moses Tey Mensa. I've furnished my correspondence that I've had with him to the committee. And then, uh, demanding a payment. You know, he responds back saying that he is so pursuing another master's degree program. So I said that in order for me to believe what he's saying, he said that he has finished one master's degree program in financial analytics. So I said, okay, let me know the school that you went in the U S. Let me even have the transcripts. Up to now, he has never provided any of such. And then he keeps on tossing the Gaming Commission up and down. So I had a discussion with the minister. And the minister asked me to write to the Attorney General's Office for advice. We've done that. We've also written another letter to the I G P to assist us in recovering the amount. Finally, yesterday, when we had a meeting with the minister at his office, he asked me to write another letter to him personally so that he will assist us to recover that amount. Because four hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and ninety, four hundred and fourteen five hundred and ninety point five-three Cedis is a lot of money. It's a lot of money that can take care of half of this in the salaries that the Gaming Commission receives at the end of the month.
Yes, Madam, Madam Chair, maybe before my colleague comes in. I mean, like the ranking was saying, the commissioner was Peter Miru. And on this particular instance, he did not follow the laid-down procedure for granting someone, what do you call it, a steady leave with P E. He didn't follow. Because what you do, you expect to get admission, you expect to all the things. When the person is in school, after every semester, the person will have to send the results for you to know that the person is still in school or not. He didn't follow all that. So I've asked the commissioner to write to me. I'm going to do three things. One, on Peter Miru, I'm going to insist that he's invited to pay the money. One. Two, the one who guaranteed, a lady who is still working in the Gaming Commission, she's also going to be made to pay part of the money. And three, on Tey Mensa himself, fortunately, immigration works under me. I'm putting him on the stop list. Any day he's coming to this country, he'll be arrested at the airport and he will have to pay that money. This is the thing that, the three things that I'm going to do. We will retrieve this money. We will retrieve this money. It may not be today, it may not be tomorrow. But like I'm saying, Peter Miru will have to answer why he granted that person that leave without following the due process and making that guy get to run away with over four hundred thousand without studying. The one who guaranteed, if you are guaranteeing for someone, you should know the trustworthiness of that person before you do the guarantee. And for him, who thinks that is out of the country, then he may have to stay there forever. Because any day he's coming, he's going to be on our stop list, and he'll be arrested at the airport, and we will make sure that he will pay that money with the interest. Thank you so much.
Honorable Minister.
Thank you, Minister. Let me also add this. The former, that's Miru was the chief executive there. You.
The commissioner.
The commissioner. Is he, this man resigned on the thirtieth of January, and he even supervised that. He brought resignation letter and he took. I mean, someone is on steady leave with P E, and the person did not serve his bond. And you took his resignation letter on the thirtieth of January. So I'm adding to what Minister said, that he actually deserved to be punished. He shouldn't go away with this. Thank you.
Honorable colleague, I was going to make a ruling on it. Minister, you've made my job easy. Whatever you said is my ruling on it. Auditors, take note. And you said it's Mr. Miru, right? Who was the commissioner at that time? He needs to hurry up and come and pay this money. Because he needs to know that he was working with Ministry of Interior. I G P is here, do I need to go anywhere? And the head of the prisons is also here. Thank you very much, Honorable Minister.
Mr. Chairman, by this, then I think we should extend to the thousand and one people who had also done same at the Ministry of Health. Minister, maybe when there's a reshuffle and they want to turn you anywhere, they should send you to Ministry of Health. You'll bring some.
Please, my people don't want me to be, my people don't want me to go anywhere.
We had a thousand and one of unserved bonds from the Ministry of Health. And so if we are all going to take some drastic measures like this, I believe it will go a long way to stop this because there are people, genuine people who will go and come back. But when we do this, we sort of place a stop on genuine people who want to go steady and then come back. So I believe that if we put some sanctions or punitive measures like this, it will serve as a deterrent to people who sign bonds, they go, they run away, receive salaries, and don't come back. Thank you.
Chairman, with your kind permission, auditors, I'm a bit curious about paragraph eighteen twenty-six. When it says he came back to resign, and you wrote that in the report, does it mean you cited a resignation letter from him?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
And it was received by the commission?
We cited the letter of resignation, as to how he submitted it, whether physically or through the internet. But we cited the letter, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have an explanation for it. He resigned a day after I have resumed office. So he just sent it. And that is the reason why you have it. So I've given it to the auditors.
Sir, we'll get him. Don't worry. The next infraction is on paragraph nineteen, eighteen twenty-nine. And that is Ghana Police Service, Bono East Region. Gaming Commission, you are discharged, please.
We came together, we have to go together, so.
Okay.
Almost all those infractors are sitting around, so we are not short of seats.
Abandoning infrastructure at our teaching man. And the amount on it is one point six million. What has happened to this project now?
Honorable Chair, yes, this is among a lot of other projects that are still in the abandoned stage. And so that the police administration has taken note of this. And then say that we are waiting funds from the Ministry of Finance so that we can be able to tackle most of these projects, which are still in the abandoned stage. This is not the only project. There are a lot of other projects in the same stage. Thank you.
Chair, yesterday, Madam Chair, yesterday, when we reviewed it, I asked the I G P to do additional work to find out, one, how much will it cost to get it completed? And then, two, currently, the office that they are occupying in that region is a rented one. How much rent are we paying? So that we'll be able to just suppose, as against the rent that we are paying, whether the amount of money required to finish it, maybe we may be able to use even our I G F to do it. But they are going to tax that, the amount of money will tell us what we'll be able to. If it is so heavy, then we have to, like the I G said, we have to control to rely on the Ministry of Finance. But if the money involved to get the thing completed is not that huge, they will try and use our I G F to finance off renting. So this is what we are trying to do. But like the I G P rightly said, we have so many of that. And following this audit, we have taxed the Estate Department of the Police to itemize all those uncompleted, not just listing them, but also tell roughly how much will be required to get them completed. So that it will help us have a clear strategy, how to get them, all those ones completed, so of going ahead and building new ones whilst these ones are still at the abandoned state. So we hope that once we get those things, you may see some improvement in the number of abandoned projects. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. Your experience and maturity shows. Thank you. We wish we could clone you and send to other ministries.
Put me into more trouble.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I'm a bit curious about the mode in which that this particular property was acquired, through auction. And I think that's, that's right knowledge, that properties acquired through such means, auction, may be encumbered in certain ways that you may not be aware. Please, I just want to know whether you've done your checks and whether there aren't any hidden encumbrances which is preventing you from proceeding with the completion or renovation of the property for your staff to move in. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, there's, there's no encumbrance so far. It is about getting money from the central government to complete the project. Because this is not the first of its kind. We have a lot of this.
I G, please, I'm struggling to hear you.
Okay, yes. What I'm saying is that this is not the first of its kind. We have a lot of these projects which are all on this stage. And then we hope that with our meeting today, we can channel our grievances through you for most of these projects which are still in this, some are in the foundation stage, some are in the linter level. And I think like Minister said, we'll take our time and compile all these lists so that we can be able to get these projects completed. And so, Honorable Chair, we are passing our issues through you to the central government for assistance. Thank you.
All right, let's, let's move on here. The next infraction is on Tano Ponkrono. Tafu. You see, when you change your R L to L and L to R, it makes it difficult. Honorable Shalil will take care of that one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tafu Ponkrono Divisional Police Command. This infraction is to do with abandoned program during study leave. The auditors noted that Sergeant Florence Enyem Knedu, with payroll number three seven four one, proceeded on a four-year study leave with pay from December twenty twenty-one to November twenty twenty-four. However, the checks, their checks revealed that she abandoned the program and traveled outside the country. In this regard, Ms. Knedu is required to refund the total amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and sixty-six point one-three Ghanaese as total salaries paid her during her study leave period. The auditors also recommended that the divisional commander should recover those amounts with interest and pay same to the Auditor General's Recovery Account. Failure to do this, the divisional commander should pay. Can I, can the committee know the progress of this recommendation?
Honorable Chair, the amount involved with interest has been paid and has been recovered and same paid to the Auditor General Recovery's account at the Bank of Ghana. Thank you.
Auditors, please, can you confirm this?
Honorable Chair, so the amount has been recovered, inclusive of interest. So a total of one hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-eight C Ds was recovered. Thank you.
Madam Chair, permit me, just to add that, yes. I mean, and give you also to the I G P, we insisted that in the security services, they are supposed to do reconciliation or head, what do you call it, validation every month. So if you are the superior who failed to do the validation and check very well, you have to be discharged. And I can tell you this amount, we discharged those who were involved and made sure they paid it together with the interest. And we've told, I've told everybody, so long as I'm there, if this thing comes, we won't even wait for auditors to raise it. The moment you get this infraction, just know that you are going to pay, and you pay straight without any delay. So but thank you so much for raising it, the auditors, and we can assure you that we'll do everything human possible to make sure that this is reduced drastically. Thank you so much.
Honorable, I think we need you with all our other ministries. You're doing a great job and we commend you for that. We hope others will follow suit. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. The next infraction is on paragraph eighteen thirty-seven. And Honorable Enes will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chair. So this infraction has to do with on-end salary for district police headquarters, Ninhahini. So the auditors noted that one officer, Godfred Akwesi Bwatin, with service number five zero two nine nine, embarked on an annual leave of forty-two days effective since May twenty twenty-four. He was expected to resume by the sixteenth of June twenty twenty-four, but failed to resume duty. What I find interesting here is that the district commander, who became aware of this situation, continued to validate this officer for the two months, which constituted into this on-end salary. I G P, can you confirm if you've been able to recover the total amount of twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety-one point six, point three-nine with interest at the prevailing Bank of Ghana rate?
Honorable Chair, the amount involved with interest has been paid, recovered and same paid into the Auditor General Recovery's account at the Bank of Ghana. And the total amount involved now was twenty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-eight. Thank you.
Auditors, can you confirm?
Honorable Chair, the assertion is accurate.
So I think, Mr. Chair, this falls in line with the directive from the minister.
And I think. Yes, and Madam Chair, if you permit me, there was one bit I forgot to mention. And now, with the help of the I G P and P O M A, we are even agreeing that if you are a service commander and you supervise this, you may, you may be hearing complain, when the time for your promotion comes, we'll use all this against you to delay it. So you sit and supervise wrong things happening. So don't come knocking on our door that it's time for promotion. You should suffer not only the repayment, but even when it comes to promotion, yours should be delayed to serve as a further deterrent for people to be up and doing, and doing the validation. So we can assure you that we are working so hard to make sure that these things are no longer within the service. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. The next infraction is on paragraph eighteen forty-one. And Duke Amwakwata Oforiata. You've taken all the names. We'll take care of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Payment, infraction, is payment without official receipts to the tune of thirty-three thousand and forty C Ds, relating to five payment vouchers of the Buakwa Divisional Police Command. The auditors recommended that the divisional commander should recover the total amount of thirty-three thousand and forty C Ds from the divisional paymaster and same paid into the Auditor General's Recovery's account at the Bank of Ghana, failing which, the divisional commander should pay. Please, I'd like to ask, what is the status of this recovery?
Honorable Chair, in terms of the time when the internal auditors were doing their work, some of the documents were inadvertently removed from the, you know, the payment vouchers, hence the audit query. The official receipts concerned have been subsequently retrieved, submitted and verified by the auditors. And so there's an attachment of all the payments, the attachments for the five companies that these monies were paid with, to. So everything has been covered. Thank you.
Auditors, can you please confirm?
Honorable Chair, those receipts were subsequently presented to us and we have verified them. So the matter is resolved.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I say something here? One thing that we noticed with the auditors, when they write the management, what do you call it, report, I know by law they are supposed to give within the month a response. Because we operate a command and control structure. So sometimes you may write, then they have to pass through the I G and go down. So it takes a little time. Because this one, for example, I'm very sure, if it has gotten to the officers involved in good time, all the attachments were there, you will have received it. But because of the route, that's why it delayed and it went. So I will be careful, if maybe with the security agencies, the auditors can find a way of working together to make sure within that one month, the team travels the path and get to each destination, we may be able to avoid some of this, because there was no any infraction, because just the attachment went off. But it's been submitted as they said. Thank you so much.
All right, the next infraction is on paragraph eighteen forty-three. And Honorable Ella Plim will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This infraction is illegal possession of firearms by civilians. Contrary to the above-stated provision, we reviewed that the firearms licenses and noted that six hundred and six firearms were illegally possessed by civilians since the licenses had expired and had not been renewed thereby, rendering their possessions and use unlawful. We obtained the six hundred and six illegal possession of firearms from the licenses issued from the general counter, counterpoor receipts to holders of firearms. Details are below. What is the status of this infraction? Thank you.
Honorable Chair, the division has compiled a database of all licensed gun holders as recommended by the auditing. And so now what we are doing now is we are sensitizing people who are in possession of guns and then they have licenses. And then when the license expired, they don't go to renew as expected. So this thing is ongoing. We are getting the list of all, so that when even the time comes, the police will call you to come and renew your license. So this exercise is ongoing now. Thank you very much.
I G, please, I want to find out, what is the process that one will have to go through to register a gun?
Yes, to register a gun means that you have to be given the license or the permit to possess a gun through this firearms registry. So when you have this gun, you are given the permit to be in possession, just like how you get driver's license permit. So you have it for a period of one year. And so after a year, you have to go back and then renew your license. But the problem we have is that people don't actually go straight to go and renew their licenses until something happens with the gun before police gets to know that such a license holder has not renewed.
Is the process straightforward? You know, sometimes people are reluctant to do some of these things because of the heckling, the pressures. So is the process straightforward, that I have to go to this office? I go, I show, just like you're going to have your, get a driver's license. You go through the test, your eye, and so is, is the process given and is the process that straightforward?
Yes, one, one of the easiest licenses or renewals to possess is the possession of, is in the renewal of your gun license. It doesn't take you more than thirty minutes to go to this office, firearms office, and immediately they check all the records and then the license is renewed. That one doesn't take time at all. It's one of the easiest way to possess and then renew your license or your permit to possess firearms. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, can I also help here? One of the challenge that we have is that everything is manual. Everything that they do is manual. So for example, you want to possess a sidearm, you write to the Minister for the Interior. I mean it to the N I B, that's the National Veterans Development Bureau, or the C I D. They will do a background check on the chair and see, oh, what does she do? She's a member of parliament, is she a chair to the public, if she holds this gun? They will do all that check, and then they will advise the minister that, oh, upon our checks, we think that she qualifies to have it. But because then now you go to the C I D office, they will take your fingerprint, they will record all those things, and then you pay the necessary fees, and then they grant you the license. The interesting thing that a lot of people don't know is that you may take your license in November. In December, it expires. It's not that for one year means until next year, November. The law is said that January, every license that you have, even if you held it, if you had it thirtieth December, January first, it expires, you have to renew it. But because all these things are manual, even, is it like, I don't know, D V L, whether they have computerized their things and now they may have our numbers, so that they can send bulk messages to us. So it's like trying to get everybody who has a vehicle to come and renew his roadworthiness. If it is not computerized, it becomes a daunting task. So this six hundred and six that they are talking about, they are scattered across the country. And trying to reach them, I mean, within a year, people might have even changed address and what have you. But what are we doing to mitigate this? We are currently working on digitalizing, like I mentioned earlier, almost every services in the ministry. In fact, we are almost at the tail end of it. We are very hopeful by November, December, it should come on board. So this is what's going to happen. You register, we have you in the registry. In the registry, we have your contact number, we have all your details. So three months to expiry, we'll send you a notification that your license will expire thirty-first December. And you no longer need to walk to any C I D office where you have to go and join a queue and do these things to pay the renewal. Once we have, because the data, the data will be talking to each other. Over the one year, we have not recorded any criminal activities about the chair that will granted the license to hold the gun. Automatically, you'll be able to pay through your Momo or using your bank details, so that you immediately renew it without having to do the struggle. So many people even tend to forget that the time has come for them to go. And lots of them maybe along the line, they just see the gun, say, hey, when was the last time I renewed my? So want to digitalize this. And by the grace of God, when we are done by the close of, worst case, by the close of the year, all these things will be digitalized and it will give people the opportunity to do the renewal online without necessarily having to walk to the police headquarters. The only thing is that if there's a criminal record over the period, if you want to renew, it may deny you, and that may warrant that you now come physical. But it also helps us now, even if you change the address, because we are going to link it to your Ghana card. Even if you change your address, we'll be able to tell that Munterka is having a gun, he has not been able to renew it over this period. And he has changed address from Asaleboche to Botema, and we'll be able to track him and either retrieve the gun from him or get him to renew his license. So these are the things that we are putting in place. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chairman. Honorable Minister. The next infraction is on paragraph eighteen forty-seven. And is Ghana Prison Service Head Office. and is our Ghana Prison Service Head Office. Honorable Sebastian Day will take care of that one.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. This infraction actually touches at the very core of human dignity, Chairman. And section thirty-five of the Prison Service Act states that the DG, Director General, shall ensure that a prisoner is regularly supplied with wholesome and nourishing food in quantities sufficient to maintain the prisoner in good health. This is our law. But the auditors found out when they went on review that as of now, a hundred and one Ghana CDs eighty pesswes is what is allocated per prisoner, per day. And this figure is on the books or is what has been approved since year twenty-ten and has not been changed. The auditors upon review recommended that the Director General should continue to liaise with the Ministry of Finance through the Ministry of Interior to increase this amount or this rate. Now, at the review, this is what management said. That the current daily feeding rate of one CD eighty pesswes per inmate per day poses a significant challenge to the service. Numerous efforts have been undertaken and continue to be made to secure an increase in the rate. And management remains committed to this matter and would persist in engaging with the Ministry of Finance through the Ministry of Interior for the rate to be increased. My question is, what is the situation now? And specifically to the Director General, how have you been managing this situation, feeding people, men and women in prison with one CD eighty pesswes per day?
Madam Chair, thank-
DG, before you answer, with the leave of our Chair, I want to come in here as the Chair of the Human Rights Committee of Ghana's Parliament. We have done some amount of work on this situation. We've visited the prisons. We had engagement with the prisons management on this issue. And it's quite worrying and with the leave of the Chair, we would want to use this platform to appeal to Mr. President that this is a serious situation we have in our prisons. The minimum prison rules, the Mandela Rule twenty-two-one talks about it. And we have engaged extensively with the Defense and Interior Committee, which is also pushing their Interior Minister on ways that we can improve this. Because there was this statement I read on the floor a few weeks, a few months ago. And you consider even the school feeding program we have currently. A school child is given two Ghana CDs a day. And two Ghana CDs fifty pesswes. And our prisoners are given only one CD eighty pesswes a day. This is three square meals. I can say six Ghana CDs in the morning, six Ghana CDs in the afternoon, sixty pesswes in the morning, sixty in the afternoon and sixty point five zero, sixty-five in the evening. And this is woefully inadequate. And Mr. Minister, with all the steps you have taken at your agencies, we are calling that in the next budget for November, some action should be taken. We called on Mr. Speaker to interfere, intervene in this. We called for even a minimum five Ghana CDs for a start. This one point eight CDs was in twenty-ten, fifteen years ago. This is not about MPP, this is not about NDC. We are calling for the right thing to be done. The injustice being meted out to our prisoners. Mr. Chair, this is a very serious matter. I have so much interest in it. And before the Minister comes, I know some action will come from Minister today. We want to use the PSC platform to call for action on this.
You say that, the reason why I'm coming up, you say we want to appeal to Mr. President. How many presidents have we had since twenty-ten? You see, no, no, it's very serious. Because twenty-ten, I'm on the floor now, I'm on the floor now, please, please, please.
If you could let us answer, all this will have been-
Thank you, thank you very much.
Come and I'll support it.
Thank you very much.
Many thanks for the opportunity. Since, I think this has been recurring in our reports every time. And in these few months, various steps have been taken as enumerated in the status of the implementation. Gladly, we proposed ten Ghana CDs and were granted five. And after the consultations, President actually instructed that the amount should be increased to five CDs. And that's an amount of ten million, which was supposed to cover the last quarter of the year, was to be released. But it is yet to be released even though the approval has been given. And I also want to put on record that, reference to the question of how we have managed the one CD eighty pesswes. I have to mention that the one CD eighty pesswes, in actual fact, is not the amount that is even used to feed the inmates because the food is supplied by contractors who also take their profit from SIM. So practically, we are feeding one CD. And so as a directorate, we have come together to bring about a project we call the Director General Kitchen Support Project. And in that project, all prison facilities across the country are supposed to have gardens, a small fish pond, a poultry or something related to animal house boundary, which is supposed to support SIM. Once in a while, the churches have also supported. And so we are feeding beyond ten CDs. And it is through ingenuity. With the approval from the President, I think now even as we speak, our budget for twenty-twenty-six is capturing the five CDs. What we need now is the amount to be released for this last quarter. And efforts are being made to get the money into our accounts and then the formal communication to that effect. As a directorate, we find this very serious because once the feeding regime is wrong, it has a rippling effect on health and every other thing. So we are so passionate about it. We are working assiduously to ensure the rules change. And we are also hopeful that the five CDs will be increased in the course of twenty-six, to reflect the feeding regime for an adult, a disgruntled adult, an angry adult behind the walls. And we also have to note on this platform that of all the things that have given cause for inmates to riot is food. And so we do everything within our walls to ensure that as much as it is possible, we are containing the inmates without the riots. Because if there is any riot, the poor prison officer becomes the first point of attack before any intervention. So whilst I have this platform, I also want to say that beyond the feeding, there are a lot of challenges. And if we want to have serious public safety in this country, we have to prioritize the needs of prisoners. Because they are part of us, they will be with us and we don't know who next is going to be our guest. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, let me just add very briefly, if you permit me, put your mic. Can you put your mic? Madam Chair, if you permit me.
But that was a very good submission, madam.
Yes.
I'm proud of you.
When I sat around this same table during the virgin, I raised this very passionately. And then since I went to the ministry, I pursued it with all the energy in me and I'm grateful the God, Lord has been so merciful to us and we thank His Excellency and the team for at least listening to us. And like Director General rightly said, in fact, they agreed to do the five CDs. And I even insisted that, yes, we need something now. Even as we await the five CDs. Fortunately, we've started the budget process, it's in there. By the last quarter, it's essentially approved that ten million, because it was going to take averagely ten million a quarter. So if you see our next budget, you see there will be. And now we're managing to separate it, because what used to happen, I'm sure, Madam Chair is very familiar, it gets bulked in within the budget of the prisons. So we are not able to see it standing alone, to see how small it is. I've managed to convince my colleague, the finance minister, to let it stand alone. So now you see it when the budget card, it will be standing alone and you see that prison feeding is standing at forty million, that's ten million per quarter. We know that the five CDs is not adequate, but looking at where we are taking it from, one CD eighty pesswes to five CDs, it would be a good start, hoping that we'll build on it. Because like you rightly said, even children who just eat once, we use two CDs fifty pesswes. Meaning that for adults, even if we are going to use that same rate, it means the minimum should be about seven CDs, what do you call it, fifty pesswes. But we proposed ten CDs. We battled it out, we were standing at seven and eight. But you know the budget envelope, they said that they can manage with five for now. We are hoping that into twenty-twenty-seven, we should be able to even get this even further improved. But like the Director General rightly said, the prison challenges are enormous. And when I visited some of them, I almost broke them because I thought that they were preparing, you know, in the house when they are preparing to do TZ, they normally mash the kandu in a kind of water. So I thought that's what they are, they said that's the porridge. I said, no, what is this? They said that's the porridge. And it came to a time that, I don't know who brought the idea of three meals square because three cannot be square. Now we cannot, we are not talking about three meals square. It will virtually come to a point that we're giving them, we're feeding them only once in a day. Because there's no any magic you can do with one Ghana CD eighty pesswes, even if there's water that you are going to give. So it was just once and that was a danger that we're sitting on. So we tried to decongest by giving amnesty to about seven hundred eighty-seven first timers and some few others totaling about nine hundred plus, just to decongest the prison. Even with that, the prison congestion are just reduced from thirty-six percent to thirty-four, thirty-three percent. Meaning that there's still congestion. But we believe that if we're able to feed and so the other strategies that we are trying to adopt, thus getting prison industrialization, where we set up industries within the prison, where Ministry of Education is supporting us to sign a memorandum of understanding to do furniture, to do the sanitary pad, to do uniform, that will help. Then they get something to do, they make additional income. And then the agriculture, and I must take this opportunity to thank a lot of nananum across the country. They listen to our plea and many of them have come forward. Some have given us two hundred acres, two hundred acres. And we are tilting it together with the Ministry of Agri. Ministry of Agri is also very supportive with this Feeding Ghana project. We partner them and we are doing all this to help make sure that we produce all the food ourselves whilst we use the, at least the little that is coming from government for feeding, to make sure that at least, if for nothing, once they are there, they should be well fed. That will help us reduce the skin diseases that we see there, a lot of the ailment that we see, all that we hope will calm down. But we are happy that at least some progress has been made and we hope that maybe within the week, the finance minister will make sure that we get the ten million so that first October, we have a start from tomorrow. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. You want to make another statement? You appealed to the President, he has listened. You have five CDs. Now what else?
Thank you, Chair, for indulging me. I would like to comment, Minister and the Director General. One last thing I want to appeal is the Reman Block, which has really got into a very good stage. I would like you to intervene and help complete it so that at least overcrowding at Nsawem with the capacity of just about eight hundred, now housing almost three thousand three hundred, would need your assistance in that regard as well. And also a last commercial, prison service, they have the best mineral water. So if you want to buy water, just go to prisons and we can also help improve the conditions there. Thank you.
Without laboring this, I just want to assure him that the Reman Prison Block is something that we are looking seriously. And all the agencies under me will tell you, when I came, I instructed, if you come to the ministry, we take the water from the prisons. All our agencies, from the police, the immigration, everybody buys that water. Just to create the market for that. And I've also tasked the Director General to work with the private partners to make sure that we are not making the money for the private people, but we are making money for the prison service. So we are doing a number of things, but because this is just about audit issues, maybe when another opportunity comes for us to talk about what are we doing with the prison, the Director General may elaborate more about some of the things that we are doing to reform the prison service there. Even the law that governs it, we've made a presentation to the Constitutional Review, they named prison, we think that, yes, it should be prison correctional facility. So that it will add in our mind that there should be correction as we talk about prison. Because currently what we are simply doing is we are just warehousing them. It's like you just buy something, just go and open a warehouse, you put it and then you lock. But that should not be the case, it should be correctional. So we thank you so much for the suggestions.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister.
Just a very simple question for the Minister. I see, still want to see. When are you going to do your next mass recruitment?
That was it, Madam Chair knows, I always have to get-
Honorable Minister, I will overrule the question.
Thank you.
Look, all the talking, you didn't tell them that Ankerful Prisons was my constituency. Okay, the next infraction is on, the next infraction is on paragraph eighteen fifty-one. That is Immigration Service, your head office.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. This has to do with withholding taxes, taxes to the tune of one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-three Ghana CDs. Some persons, some people supply goods and services and your organization was supposed to pay withholding taxes to GRA. During the reconciliation, it came out that out of eight million, seven hundred thousand plus, you paid seven million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, leaving with an amount of one million, two hundred, one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-three Ghana CDs, twenty-nine pesswes. Management also realized that. Let me find out, has this money been paid? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, there was reconciliation. The one point two seventy-two is not all, somewhere exemptions from GRA. It had to do with officers' rent allowance, which is exempted, but it was added to the figure. With the reconciliation, the amount that was left was one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one point seventeen CDs, which was duly paid to the GRA. There is evidence to that effect. And in fact, sixty-five thousand, ninety-seven CDs was paid but was captured as part of the non-payment. So the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one CD seventeen pesswes has been duly paid to the GRA.
Thank you, Controller. Can the auditors confirm this?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm.
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that the tax exemption amounted to 1,113,472 cities. And the actual payment was 159,000.
Thank you, Controller. Good job done.
One minute, I just want to find out. Don't you pay taxes on your rent? The security agencies are not supposed to pay taxes on their rent.
Madam Chair, yes. And there's the evidence, we've given them the letter. Because, I mean, as you may know, this year rent is, because of the percentage of salaries, some time cannot get them the accommodation. So I think the Ministry of Finance worked it out through Parliament to exempt them. So because of that, they don't. Almost all of them, and there's no almost, all of them don't pay tax on their rent.
Respectfully, I want the auditors to confirm if, and there's a rule or there's a law that exempts the security agencies from paying taxes on rent.
They have a letter. This is actually a subsidy, rent subsidy. So it's not part of their monthly salary that you see.
So it's not an exemption, it's a subsidy. Aha, there's a clear difference between an exemption and then a subsidy.
You know, you have to teach us finance at the times.
Okay, Ghana Immigration Service. You procured some shoes without getting a concurrent approval for it. The recommendation was for the Controller General should initiate the process of implementing the provision under section 92 of the Public Procurement Act 2003, as amended for the implementation of the sanctions against the officers whose actions occasion that anomaly. Have you done that?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In actual fact, the necessary procurements were obtained. The procurement was done in 2022, and the payment done somewhere in 2024. The documentation, the approval from Public Procurement Authority is there. The tender review committee report is there. Everything was done. And the auditors have been furnished with all the documentation. I think it was the question of citing documentation.
Where were the documents when the auditors came?
I think we have challenges with space. Our headquarters is very, very, very small. So sometimes document preservation is a challenge. So I think within the period of the reconciliation, they obtained the documents. But it wasn't that the procurement was done without the proper authorization. The approvals were gotten actually before the procurement. And all the documents were finished to the auditors. And we have copies.
Our auditors, have you cited these documents?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the documents were subsequently submitted to us. We captured it because it came a bit late. But then we had almost completed the report. But they provided the documents, and we realized that indeed the procurement procedures actually started way back 2022.
So, Mr. Chair, I mean, let me just say this. It came again, like I rightly said, the time and the command and control, the way it goes. Because this was 2022. And like the Controller rightly said, the office space there is really choked. So when the infraction was raised in 2024, to go and get documentation from 2022 to prove that it was properly done, there was that little delay, and that's what causes it. But not because it wasn't there. And I'm sure the auditors just confirmed that they received it. Thank you so much.
Honorable Minister, thank you for attending to the committee. And which one?
Madam Chair, I thought you are my friend. When they decided, let me.
No, you see the way our women are beautifully attached here. They need to speak for people to know the words that they have in them. So now we have to do fire. So allow us to come to Ghana National Fire Service. That's what I was telling there.
The next one is on Ghana National Fire Service. New Edu B R C, who's taken 1858.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction has to do with someone earned salary for three individuals to the tune of 16,570 Ghana cities. And that two of them, you said, have been diseased. And I wonder why you verify a diseased person. Yesterday, we saw some individuals being verified for 26 months who were diseased. But they were asked that this amount be taken from their nest of kings. What recovery have been done out of these 16,000 so far?
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. We did a reconciliation with the auditors and realized it was 7,289.1 Honorable Chair, please, the money has been recovered and duly paid to the appropriate quarters.
Auditors, can you please confirm this reconciled figure and the recovery as well?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the amount was reconciled down to 7,269, which has been recovered.
Okay, Chairman. The next infraction is on paragraph 1861. And Honorable Hotoga will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this infraction has to do with an earned salary at the fire station in Offenso. One John Tewia, a leading fireman with staff ID 129485, 1294582, who vacated posts from 1st November 2023, was validated and paid an earned salary of 3,485.49 for November 2023. The recommendation of the auditors is that the municipal fire commander, Massenshiyo, that the affected staff paid back that money with prevailing Bank of Ghana rate and lost same in Auditor General's recovery account at the Bank of Ghana. Failing wish, the municipal fire officer and the validator should be made to pay the money. What is the current status of this particular issue?
Honorable Chair, as you said, the validators were made to pay the amount and is still paid.
Mr. Auditor, is that true? Has that been done accordingly?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the amount has been recovered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. The next one is on paragraph 1863, and it's on an earned salary of 6,152. What has happened to this amount?
Honorable Chair, please, it has been recovered and paid appropriately to the authorities concerned.
Auditors, can you confirm?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that.
Now, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I will just add, just for emphasis. We are not joking with this on N and all that. Once you validate, you carry the cross. We are very clear on that. You pay, they have some excuse. For example, someone has a deduction. Let's say he has a deduction of Offenso and say Tachima. And he will have an excuse that, oh, because Tachima is far from Offenso. Before I got to know, the amount has ended. I said, no, that's your headache to carry. You don't validate if you are not sure. Once you did the validation, you pay the penalty. So that's why we've been able to receive all from those who validated. If somebody is dead and you give them money, we are not going to be running after the deceased family. You're the one who validated, who have to suffer the consequences. Because even the security service, you can allow this to happen. Then that means there will be complete chaos. So we are very firm and will continue to hold the line and make sure that this nature of infractions do not happen. If it will happen, it should happen somewhere, but not within the security services. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. And your team, you have done very well over here, answered all the questions. You are duly discharged.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Honorable Minister. There are a few public interest questions that have been brought to my attention that I believe that the people of Ghana are waiting for one of the wonderful ministers we have in this country to help your agency answer, yes. Although today, it's clear, it's been shown that Minister, you're on top of what you do. And I'm happy that.
Madam Chair, I beg you, if you could, let me.
Yes. This, no, this is my personal, I mean, view of things. That you're on top of what you do. And I'm very happy with not just the submissions that you have made, but you are looking into the future, moving forward, what you intend to do to help keep some of these infractions. I'm happy with, one, the digitalization of the whole process. So that it will go a long way to reduce human interventions. And usually, when human interventions are reduced, there's efficiency and things get better. And so I'm happy with that. I'm also happy to hear that the feeding for the prison inmates have been increased from one city, 80 percent, to five cities. I'm happy because in this country, we are one people irrespective of where you find yourself. Whether you're a prisoner or you're a child enjoying free S H S. We are one people. And as such, we should all look to the interest of our citizens. So I'm happy that this is going to be done and is going to be reflected in the next budget. There are two things. Ghana Immigration Service. Your people are saying that whenever they are sick or they need some health intervention, they always have to come all the way from, those who are not within Accra. They always will have to come all the way from wherever they are to Accra to enjoy these services. When it comes to endorsements of loans and all these things, they always will have to come from wherever they find themselves in the region to Accra. But I believe that we have offices and command centers in various places. With the improvements that your minister is talking about, it is time that I believe you set up offices in places that will be convenient for everybody. Because everywhere, every part of this country is Ghana. So once they are somewhere, they should be able to enjoy the same benefits, the basic benefits that every person, be it in Accra or Kumasi or wherever, is enjoying. And so, Minister, I'll plead with you to work with the Controller to make sure some of these little, little things that helps and boosts staff morale are put in place so that we keep that huge distance that they have to come all the way to enjoy some of these benefits. And secondly, to the IGP. I want to know the process. Okay, let me put it this way. If a mob attacks a police station, what should be the response? I wasn't happy when I saw that the Tafo Police Station had been attacked and a letter had been written that it's being closed down, the staff are being transferred to a different place. Should that be the reaction when a mob attacks a police station? And lastly, in the process of promotion, I believe that there should be fairness. A lot of people complain about the fact that even though they are laid down procedures to go into, what do you call the college, sometimes they get the feeling that the processes are circumvented. And people who are due to go for or to attend, what do you call the college, are not given that opportunity. But I believe that irrespective of whom you know or who you know, if you have at least attained that minimum, that basic qualification to earn you that place, whether it is Honorable Muntaka, who is the IGP, or it is Mrs. Bafuboni, who is the IGP, you will have to go because that is what the rule says. So if you can take time to explain this to us, we're very grateful. Because today, if I don't do this, the people of Ghana would not be happy with me.
So maybe what I'll do is I'll let the commanders respond because some of the issues are not exactly so than our feeling. So maybe we'll start with immigration.
Yes, Madam Chair. Regarding loan endorsements, we realize that a lot of the officers take the loan. The next moment, he's traveled out of the country, he's not coming back. And the employer guarantee means it becomes the liability of the service. So we ask the regional commanders to do due diligence, just like their earned salary. So if they are not sure of you, they would ask you go to the center. And the records have shown, a lot of them. So now most of the banks are now putting insurance on the loans. With those ones, the regional commanders can do. You imagine an employee who is less than two years, is asking for a loan of 50,000. He hasn't even finished serving probation. These are the challenges. They will not tell you the truth. Most of them really don't qualify for the things they apply for and they are denied. So with regards to the loan, we are realizing we are incurring a lot of liabilities because of people take the loan. He comes outside the country, never to return. So with that one, the regional commanders are also trying to avoid being held accountable. Two, three man salary is different from a loan. So that is the challenge. With regards to the medical issue, it's never true. I was a regional commander from Bono Region before I came to headquarters. As soon as you are taken ill, especially if it's a serious condition, the service takes over. Headquarters will advance some money to the regional commander or whoever is responsible. If it becomes even critical, we partner with the airport, they will airlift you to Accra. We have regional hospitals. They all go and they submit their bills to be paid.
Do you have hospitals around or?
All the regional hospitals.
You can attend any of the regional hospitals.
You go and submit the bill. These officers will harass us for their rent allowance, which is 300 Ghana. When we tell them, let's put that money into a fund and take care of everyone, no. They are up in arms. In reality, if I give you the 300 Ghana, I'm done with you. But we've gone beyond that. If we knew, we would have brought you bills. We pay officers' bills to the tune of 100, 200,000 plus. Because we have instituted a welfare fund, a medical fund. Every man, we deduct a certain amount from our salaries just to take care of these things. I think what has happened in the past is that it has not been formalized. So I have directed the finance and admin to sign an agreement with all regional hospitals. Just like in Accra, we have with Ridge Hospital and 37. You go there, you are treated, and the bill is sent to the service to pay. You go to Asimfo, so we have it with the San Joseph's Hospital. They take care of the trainees. Then the bill comes later, then we pay. In the past, it wasn't formalized. When it happens, the knee-jerk approach. But I've actually tasked her to sign an agreement with, and I think our training school at Chibi, we have already done that with the Chibi Government Hospital because it's a training facility. So it is not true that they have to come all the way to Accra, no.
Happy that you said, you've asked that they formalize the agreements between the regional hospitals so that when they go there, their bills are brought to you. Validated first and then brought to you, because that is also important. You don't want a situation where you are saddled with so much that you tend to wonder if truly this is actually the bill coming from you. But I'm asking also, aren't they mandated to use their NHIA cards or to cover bills that NHIA does not cover?
That is the challenge. Some of them are very stubborn. We even wanted a situation whereby we could procure the NIA card compulsory from their 300 Ghana medical allowance. They will go to all manner of media houses and peddle lies. So we give them the option. But it's mandatory for every officer to have an NIA card. But most of them will not renew it. That is the challenge. Because they think that when it gets critical, the service will take over.
Well, Madam, maybe before the IGP comes on the immigration, just to fill in. One of, like he rightly said about the loans. One of the things that I've been suggesting to them is that, well, we can let people take their. One of the thing that I've been suggesting to them is that, well, we can let people take the loan and the regional commanders be reassured that, don't let it be so stressful, but understand that we'll put you on the stop list. So the man you take a loan, we'll put you on the stop list to say that you are the type who cannot travel. Then they say that it's abusive, so you want to eat your cake and have it. No, we'll take, we'll put you, we'll let you take the loan. Because what we normally realize is that officers who have done something and they've gotten some school or they've gotten some opportunity to travel, they are those who quickly go in for a loan and use the service as guarantee. Then before you realize the next moment, the person has left, then you write that he's quitting the service. So we said, fine, it will be easier, we'll let you take the loan at the regional level. Let the commander just allow you to take it, but immediately we'll put you on the stop list. With regards to the health, listen, I was, I've been talking to the comptroller. I'm thinking that instead of us to wait for them to sometime fall sick and then we foot all this bill. Why are we not going to put it as part of our budget line? That we will ensure that you have an health insurance that is working. So that at least the top is what we be struggling with, the additional. But at least health insurance takes care of the core. Unfortunately, because immigration is a, a, a new institution, just like fire, not like the police. The police has hospital. But the major challenge we even have now is that with the police hospital, I keep telling them that we are in the same agency. Why are we still acting and behaving in silos? If there's a police hospital, all the services should be able to attend and be given the same criteries like the police officers. So that we equip the police officers. Instead of wanting, police also want to build hospital across all the system region. Immigration wants to build hospital across the system region. Fire wants to do it. Then where we do not have police hospital, we can say maybe this fire hospital. Then another place we build immigration, then prison. But they are working together and making sure that they are taking care of themselves. But the challenge, as you may know, as we speak, the police hospital in Kumasi was commissioned by me. The Tamilly Police Hospital is ready for commission. We don't have staff to, to manage. And we need to recruit doctors, nurses and what have you to manage. But the usual thing, waiting for financial clearance from Finance Minister to be able to do that. So the facilities are there, but we don't have the men to, 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 to manage. So we are hoping that when we get there, because at least the police have some facilities across the country, working together, all the services should be able to go there, having the health insurance card. The additional one, we will be able to work it up because we are in the same, uh, uh, ministry. So we are trying to put up the best modalities to see how we'll take good care of them whilst they are serving the country. But I sincerely believe we should be able to do this. Even the police that we have, the police hospitals, let's make sure that we have the health insurance card for them so that we are only burdened with the additional funding beyond what the national health insurance can do. Thank you, Madam. So now maybe I G P will respond to this comment about-
Honorable Minister, uh, I want to use this forum to tell members of the public that we all have to condemn the acts of irate youths always attacking police stations. There's a community in this country where we have one police station, which is a divisional headquarters being built by government. And then we have another, that is a district headquarters being built by the locals themselves. When they were going to attack, they went to the building that was built by the government, they burned the building down. They came to their local building, then somebody said, no, no, this was the M P who built it, so let us not touch it. So they didn't touch it. And so today, when you are in your area and you are asking us, we should come and open a police station, who asks you to build a police station yourself? And it is, when you build a police station and all those areas where there are these disturbances, they never attacked the, uh, the stations that were built by the community themselves. And it is not good for this country. And so if you ask of closing down, yes, we'll close down because you have destroyed the, the station.
Mr. I G P, that cannot be the response. Because there are several places in this country where mobs have attacked police stations. But we never hear that the police stations have been closed down. So, Miss, uh, Honorable Minister, for me, I don't think that should be the response. It's like, uh, the fact that your child, uh, uh, yes, piece on your lap doesn't mean you should cut your lap off. What can you do to help strengthen your engagement with the community there? So that they will see that you people are one, you are there to protect them and they are also there to discharge your mandate as citizens. But clearly, I don't think the answer should be the shouting that- we, I'm, I'm not happy with the way things went, the fact that they attacked the place, the fact that it was burnt down.
Madam, this is the answer I have to give, Madam. There's nothing more than this answer.
Can I finish, please? Can I finish? The fact that you even, your, your, some of your men were hit, I mean, it, it is not something that, uh, we are happy with. But I don't think that the police is there to protect people, protect property, protect the community. I don't think that should be the answer. Maybe if there are certain, uh, sanctions that you put in place to help reduce these things, yes. But the answer shouldn't be that, just because my son or my daughter has done this, you are no more my son, you are no more my daughter. I have disowned you.
Madam Chair, well, Madam, Madam Chair, to, 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 to say that, uh, you have to understand where the I G is coming from. I must say, he hasn't closed any police station without first talking to me. And each time he, he, no, and each time he comes to me, I ask, what is the situation like? And I can tell you, Madam Chair, I, I know of the old Tafu that you- Madam Chair, are you listening? Madam Chair, you asked a question, so I'm trying to answer, if you could listen so that we'll make- we are not denying that we'll close some station. What I'm saying is that there's not a single one he closed, the I G P closed without talking to me as the minister. And each time he came, I've asked some questions. One, what is the situation like? He would give me what we call the situational report. And I've cross-checked each of it with the regional minister. And in some instances, in the case of Eastern Region, you can find out from your, our colleague, the regional minister, where I tax her to even go to a community. Each of the instances where we had to close, each of the instances that we had to close, it is when our men are in danger. One, the men that you have there are not many. And the community mob outnumberes the police. We do not want a situation where anybody will lose life because of the confrontation with the police. So we'll say that, can we close it temporary? Whilst we get the regional minister and others go in intervene, calm tempers down, then we reopen. Because it is for safety of our men. It's not that we are doing it as a punishment to close down so that, because in that heat, you see, the challenge that I've noticed over the period is that when you anger the police, you assume that he is professional, he should be able to act professional. But it's, with the greatest, it's like you and I, the same blood, the same- so once a stone hits him, he begin to cock his gun. And then when there's death, then we are on them. So but when there's danger, but where we have men, let's say, we have a barracks, the men are many, or maybe there's even a nearby police station or place that we can call for reinforcement, we quickly call for reinforcement to enforce the law and order and protect the men that are there. So all those incidents that you noticed that you checked, you see that it's a small police station where the men are few and the irate youth, the anger is so high that you want to get tempers down. So you can be rest assured, I will assure, I can assure you that we will not run away from our responsibility. That because you have shot and killed a police officer, so we are packing out of a whole region or out of, out of a whole district or out of a whole town. But during that period where tempers are high, what we do is that we withdraw, and there are so many examples, I'll tell you like Boku. When they were at the peak of time, they attacked the divisional command, they burned the police station. Even our men who were living in private homes, we have to withdraw all of them into a camp, the military camp, just for safety. Not even only them, there were immigration, fire, we had to quickly move into the camp just to make sure that they safeguard them. It is only the military then who were stepping out with armored vehicles to make sure that tempers calm down before we go back to be able to open. And on Kranza, I can tell you, so we have a number of incidents, but it is on the situation and the need to do it. It's not an arbitrary thing, but we do it on the need to do it. And usually, it's not supposed to be for a long period. It is just to make sure that tempers are down, we get our men back, we refocus the place. But what we want to make an appeal through all of us is that we should be able to talk to our citizens to know that police are supposed to be our friends. The time where we have a police force is different from now we have police service. They are supposed to serve us, they are supposed to be our first line of, uh, what you call a protection. That's why you see that in the case of the military, because they are not trained to manage people. Even if you throw such water to a soldier, he throw bullets back to you. Because for them, anything you throw to him, even if you throw an agative to a soldier, he, for him, does a miser. And then he will fire you with a bullet. So but the police are not like that. But sometime when they are in danger, we need to appreciate that, we need to de-escalate. Especially where they fault, they are blaming one police officer or the other for the cause of a death or injury. If you don't do that, you are not careful, you may escalate the whole thing. So Madam, the rest assured, if there's any police station that is still closed, I can assure you that together with the I G P, we'll take steps to get them open.
Thank you very much, uh, Minister, Mister Minister. You know, the letter did not say that, uh, it was, uh, they are stepping it down for a while and to look at the situation and get back. They are closing the police station, they are sending their men outside. And I'm thinking, um, maybe, I know, they also reacted to a suspect dying in the custody of, um, the police. And so that is why, but that these two wrongs will not make, bring the person back. But so we should find how we can engage more, the police can engage more in community. I don't think that people will just go out of their way to burn down, um, um, police stations that have been, um, built by governments. It is not, uh, the case. And it is not intentional that they would leave that of the police station built by the M P and then go ahead and burn police stations built by government. No, I, 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 I think we should-
In fact, Madam Chair, it's what we are seeing. So you know the interesting thing, over the period I have been an M P. I have built more police stations than what government had done. And if you go to Aswasi, the only one that we had, that we used to call Aswasi Police Station was the airport police station, which is at the airport now. You go to Aswasi, we built one, we built one in Borbain, we built one in Bakuswe in Asokomampong, which was done privately. And I can tell you, there have been instances where, I think the one in Aswasi proper now, where there was an infraction. When they wanted to do like they had done to the airport police station before, the same members said, no, 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 this one was built by our M P O. So I mean, what the I G say is a fact, but what we are saying is that whatever it has been-
It's all about engagement.
Yes, I agree with you.
So if you, you engage closely with them, they will cherish you and they will make sure they work hand in hand with you. So maybe let us engage more with the citizens.
In fact, this is why we are trying to even do-
Understand where they are coming from. But I also, I'm speaking, I'm as a citizen of this country-
Perfectly.
That we need that protection. And so for any reason, if one wrong has been done, it doesn't mean that you should pull away from your services. So the second one, uh, to do with the college attendance, I'll be grateful if I can-
Yes, I mean, uh, I G would try, I mean, I will also add up what he's done about the recruitment into the college. Even the promotion.
Honorable Chair, um, for the college, uh, there's no, uh, let's say, any, there's no exercise going now for people to go to college. And that one will be done later. Uh, really, those things happened in the past. And then, uh, when I zoom office, I did all within my, 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 my powers to make sure that we correct all those anomalies about promotions. So those anomalies were sent to the police council and then they were approved. And so personnel who were far behind in, in their ranks, four years, five years, six, eight years and were not promoted, they have also been, they have been given those promotions. And so preparation to go to police academy, nothing is going on as at now. And so those complaints, uh, cannot happen at this time of the period. Thank you very much.
Well, Madam, Madam Chair, like the I G rightly said, we had taken steps when we came. Uh, we had all these complaints and we took steps to say that, look, let's right the wrong. And let's, if anybody is not satisfied, let's have a petition. As you and I speak, we have, I think about seven petitions that has been looked at. We have the police council meeting sometime maybe this week or early next week. Those ones will even be looked at. Then about the college, look, you have to be chief inspector before you can get to college. At a point in time, you have more chief inspectors than the space can take. So you have to introduce an entrance exams. And then some will fail, some will pass. Even the passing, let's say if you set fifty percent for passing and we, I'm learning from the law school incident. So you don't say the pass mark, you just say that, look, this can take two hundred. So I'll take the first two hundred to go, another opportunity comes, the others will go. I know your challenge, the challenge is about the transparent nature of it, how transparent is it? So that we are trying to make sure that we put up the right modalities to make sure that when it is done, you not have this unnecessarily suspicion that someone who didn't qualify has been given an opportunity to go whilst those who qualify are sitting behind. Since we came, there's haven't been any opportunity to go to college because of this same financial clearance. But we are working at it and I can assure you and the general public is that when the time comes and we are going, we'll make sure that the right things are done. And those who sincerely and genuinely have the opportunity to go, will have the opportunity to go. You know, in the past, we've seen people where, as the, as I said, you have to be chief inspector before you go. Somebody is an inspector and is made to go ahead of people who are chief inspectors. I can assure you that will not happen under our watch. We'll make sure that the right thing is done. Even the chief inspectors, some is a chief inspector, but he doesn't even have a diploma or a degree. You can't go ahead of somebody who has, uh, uh, maybe his degree and a masters. You have to write the entrance exam. So make sure that, that those things are, 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 are properly done. With regards to the promotion, Madam Chair, I am very clear of my mind. Even the police administration themselves don't feel comfortable when I say it. I don't see anywhere in this world where what they are doing happens. With the greater respect, what I see around this table, I've been in the Chamber of Parliament longer than any of you. So when it comes to parliament and what we do, I know we all know ourselves. And even though we might have come in the same year, we know our each other's worth. You just sit in the police, four years, it's time for promotion, then all of us are promoted. Four years, it's another time for promotion, then all of us are promoted. What is incentive for hard work? There will be no incentive for anybody to work hard. Because as we all know, the harder you work, the more you are likely to have service issues. Because you are working very hard, you make some mistake here, then they will query you, you make that mistake a little there. It is the one who goes to fetch water that brings the pot. So I don't want any infractions, so I'll fold my hand and just be lying down. And then four years come, I get promoted. You the one who's been working very hard, sometime you get queries and other things. Because of those queries, you are lagging behind. Because when they come and check your file, oh, the other time, you did this, you did this. So because of that, yours is going to be delayed. He has lied low or she has lied low, four years come, as we, the last police council, I table and insisted that we need to review the regulation. I think that for us to have a very efficient service, whether police, immigration, fire, prisons, it must be anchored on three things. One, the attitude of the service person. Two, the skills that you have and trade the knowledge. And the skills can only be gotten only through product training. So you should, in my view, you should not just get promoted when you've not gone through certain, what do you call, regimental training. I'm sorry to say, we have police officers today, if you take them to the police range for firing. Madam Chair, they will, they will peace on themselves. Yet they are walking around every four years, promote me, promote me. Another thing, someone comes as a professional. Madam, you are, you are, you are a professional. You are a professional, a chartered accountant, you join a service. And then before you realize you want to be promoted to even come in the police, to be commissioner of police, that is wrong. It doesn't happen anywhere. Because you are a professional, you have a limit where you go. For you to become a commissioner means that you can be an I G P, you should be an operational person. Someone comes as a P R, then before you realize, you take the P R, he doesn't go anywhere, he hasn't been anything, he hasn't done anything significant, tomorrow he's C O P. And once he's C O P, he start knocking on politicians, though I want to be I G P. I'm sorry to say, I give this example. Madam Chair, I know an immigration officer, when we first came, that he is so N D C that he's a superintendent of immigration. He went to tell the, the corridors of government that he should be made the comptroller general. But they don't know myself until I became the interim minister, I didn't know their, their numerical letter very well. Then the thing was forwarded to me. I look at it, I said, ah, I don't want to believe that this is true. So I called the immigration- So I called the immigration, the comptroller. Can you check your system, this person, what is his rank? He confirmed what I've seen on the paper. I purely took my vehicle through to the corridors of power. I said, ah, this C V D, do you know what it means? From superintendent, you go to chief superintendent. From chief superintendent to assistant commissioner. From assistant commissioner to deputy commissioner, before you get to the top. And this one, because he's so NDC, he wants to be picked from this middle to go and head the place. And you know the funny thing, when he was recruited, he was recruited as a driver. How do we just want to do politics and destroy the institution that we have? So some of the, the new measures that I'm trying, I mean, the new government is trying to implement in the services, they themselves are not very comfortable with it, because I insist that it should be based on merit. I was in, I was somewhere where a, a fire officer, who is a driver, he has driven the fire tender for, 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 for long. And I got into a state, he thinks that he should be able to cross to the next level without passing through the exams. I said, no, you must pass the exams. You, I mean, with greater respect, you may be Zenata Rollins, the daughter of President Rollins who from NDC. Once you are in the service, this is, you must pass the exams before you can cross the next level. We are not just going to jump you, oh, but in the past they've done, I said, if people have done in the past wrong thing, honestly, I'm not going to sit and supervise the wrong thing being done. So you can be rest assured, when it comes to the promotion, we will be very mindful. And it will interest you to know, when we are even going for police council, I'll tell the IGP, IG, can I know the currently, you know what they call, with the services? Depending on the size of the service, they have what they call the established positions. So the police, how many COPs should you have? How many DCOPs should you have? So if you are coming for promotion, I will look, ah, you already have, let's say, if you are supposed to have only twenty COPs, now you have fifteen, and you are saying that I should promote six. Then I said, ah, it will pass your established positions, because you are supposed to have maximum twenty. Now you have fifteen, and now you are bringing six, that will make you twenty to one. So among them, who is the junior most, he should wait. When is somebody retiring? You have to match all that, and they are not comfortable, I know, they are not, but I keep saying that, look, we cannot keep doing the wrong thing and expect that magic will happen. Some people should be firm to say that, let's do the right thing and let's see what the right thing will do. I know, people have told me, whispering into my ear. I mean, okay, you sit and be doing the right thing, another government will come and mess all the right thing that you've done. At least whilst I'm there, let me do the right thing, that is the best thing. So thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, honorable minister. This is parliament, so we don't clap here. But this is an extension, to be honest with you, this is worth, or was worth the wait. You know, we should have met you in August. And then for one reason or the other, we couldn't meet you because of your shadows and our shadows as well. And so it was worth the wait. And thank you so much for this interactive session. I wish you all the best, I pray and hope that you all discharge your mandates as is expected of you, so that at the end of the day, it is Ghana that wins. Thank you. Honorable Rankin, over to you.
Ladies and gentlemen, there, we are still live on TV. Let's call our Minister of Justice and Attorney General, please. At judicial service, thank you. Have you guys taken the oath yet? Okay, clerks, let them, let them take the oath.
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Could you please introduce yourself to the committee?
Good afternoon, honorable chair. My name is Fatibo Duaseedo.
At judicial service, did you take the oath? Judicial service, did you take the oath? We are just like in Quarto, you guys will administer the oath over there, you don't want to do here.
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please introduce yourself to the committee.
Honorable Chair, my name is Charles Saidan, the deputy director of finance.
Can sit and talk, please.
Honorable Chair, Mrs. Verratti, she director of finance.
Honorable Chair, I'm Dorise Hwanam Akka, judicial service.
Honorable Chair, I'm Kenneth Ampau.
You just mentioned your name.
Accountant.
Accountant, okay.
Honorable Chair, Kenneth Ampau, head of PPS.
Honorable Chair, good afternoon, my name is Fatibo Duaseedo, chief director at Office of Attorney General, Minister of Justice.
Good afternoon, honorable chair, my name is Helen Akpene Awuziu, Solicitor General of the Office of Attorney General, thank you.
Good afternoon, honorable chair, my name is Ali Sisenu, administrator, Office of Attorney General Ashanti.
Good afternoon, honorable chair, my name is Josephina Toshiva, financial controller, Office of Attorney General, Ministry of Justice.
Where is the minister or the deputy?
Good afternoon. My name is Ernest Oferai, regional head of the Office of Attorney General Ashanti Region, thank you.
Where is the minister or the deputy minister?
Honorable Chair, they've been called to a very important meeting, they send their apologies that they couldn't make it today. Because this particular meeting has been rescheduled, this is the second time we've been called upon. The first time they were actually available, so they sent their apologies.
Madam, you, your ministry requested for the change. That's why we rescheduled. So we are sorry to have to discharge you, we need to have the head of the institution here or a deputy person. So you are discharged? We'll communicate a new date to you.
Thank you, honorable.
Judicial service is here, right? So judicial service, you also go with them?
Yeah.
Minister of?
Local government.
Minister of local government, please.
Honorable Chair, judicial service, we are not under the Ministry of Attorney General. We are on our own, we are not, we are not an MBA under the Attorney General's department.
You are not under?
We are not under any ministry.
So who is your head?
Yes.
So who is your head?
The chief justice and the administrative head is the judicial secretary.
So where is the judicial secretary?
Where is the judicial secretary?
Honorable Chair, please, in the general legal council meeting, so was the call to the bar.
Thank you very much. We will take care of our, our local government, please, come with your head.
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Honorable minister, could you introduce yourself and your team, please?
Thank you, honorable chair. My name is Retana Odulisowa, deputy minister for local government, chiefancy and religious affairs, standing in for my honorable minister, honorable Ahmed Ibrahim, thank you.
Good afternoon, honorable chair, my name is Alaji Amin Abduraman. I'm the chief director of the Ministry of Local Government, chiefancy and religious affairs.
Thank you, honorable chair. Dr. Kodye Boa is my name. I work with the Land Use and Special Plan Authority as the chief executive officer, thank you.
My name is Felicia Napajama Buache, the chief director, office of the head of the local government service.
My name is Samuel Blebu, acting director for Department of Community Development.
Thank you, honorable chair, my name is Eric Banroyele, the financial controller of the Ministry of Local Government, Chiefancy and Religious Affairs, thank you.
Honorable chair, my name is Joseph Nelson, Western Regional Minister.
My name is Rachel Fusuya Sapon, the acting regional coordinating director, Western Region.
Honorable chair, my name is Jonathan Jan Jewu, the regional director, Department of Social Welfare.
Thank you very much. Honorable minister, to start off with, we have our first infraction on Office of the Head of Local Government on earned salary of fifty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-four Ghana cedis. What has happened to this amount?
Thank you, honorable chair, I'm here with my chief director and other directors, as well as the RCCs, so they are going to speak to that, thank you.
Ah, madam, let me start from a different place. I will start from Department of Community Development headquarters. Our non-deduction of rent, which is seventy-five thousand Ghana cedis.
Thank you, honorable chair. The amount in question, seventy-five thousand. Thank you, Honorable Chair. The amount in question, 75,454 Ghana Cedis. A partial payment had been made from the offices to the tune of 6,800, and that had been paid into the Attorney General's.
Could you repeat what you just said? I want to hear it well. Out of the 75,000, how much have you collected?
6,800 have been collected so far and have been transferred into the Audit General's recovery accounts, and the rest have been scheduled to be paid in installment, I mean, not less than one and a half years. We have also received a code from the Controller and Accountant General so that the dashing can be fetched from the source starting from November this year.
Sir, just let me remind you, you are live on GTV. You are live on Facebook. You are live on Parliament's TV channel. And you can look at this committee and tell us that out of 75,000 Ghana Cedis, you've collected 6,800. And we should give you one and a half years to collect this amount. I mean, now, Lazros Benin, Assistant Director of Community, where is he?
Honorable Chair, please, he's not with us here.
He's not with you here. He's supposed to pay 10% of his basic salary as rent. And he owes 12,000. Samuel Blabu? He's a Deputy Director. He owes 23,900. How much of it has he paid?
Honorable Chair, collectively, we have.
No, I'm talking about this particular person, Samuel Blabu, who is a Deputy Director.
I think he had paid an amount of 3,000 out of the total amount.
You see, the number of months he's behind is 27 months. 27 months, and he's paid what, how much?
Honorable Chair, I think the arrangement is that he's supposed to pay 10, thousands this amount to recover the amount in question within 27.
When did he start paying that 1,000 Cedis?
Honorable Chair, the actual issue is that we actually applied to Controller and Accountant General to deduct the said rent from source since 2023. And in March 2024, we had a letter from Controller indicating that allocation of a dashing code. But unfortunately, there was a mistake in the code, so we had to refer back to them for the correction. And unfortunately, it has delayed from Controller's point of view. In fact, documents, I mean, these relevant documents have been made available to the auditors.
Sir.
And that is what.
Sir, sorry to cut you off, but all these people listed over here have owed this rent for 27 months. And you want one and a half more years to collect this amount? How? What are you telling us?
Honorable Chair, I think what we took in account, the ability to pay. Because what we, hopefully, thankfully, the code had been given, so what we agreed on was that whilst we paid the rent, while we paid the, I mean, what we have, we have owned, we still, we continue to pay the rest of the month that's ahead of until the code is given. That is how come, I mean, this arrangement was made. So now that we have received the code, we will talk with the auditors so that we will look at the.
Sir, you were not prepared coming to meet this committee. You were not prepared. Look, Achua Achampo, who is a Principal Community Development Officer, lives in a big, small, single room, pays 80 Cedis a month, and she owes 2,160. And we should give her one and a half years to pay 2,160. I mean, are we running an NGO or charity organization here? Sir, come again.
Honorable Chair, we have already started, I mean, intensifying the.
I can make it easier for you.
Yes, Honorable.
You pay this amount and you go after them to collect it. Simple. So auditors, take note, he's not making any effort. So he will pay 75,000 Ghana Cedis. And then he will go after those people and collect his money.
Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair.
Yes, madam.
Yes, please. They haven't done so well, but I want to appeal that if we can give them six months to ensure that they collect the debts.
Madam, they had 27 months.
I really understand that, and they should have been saving towards the payment. But now that they are asking for one and a half years, I think it's not in order. And so I want to step in, the ministry wants to step in to ensure that within six months, they paid off this money. Thank you.
Now, six months, if it's not paid within six months, then who pays?
Honorable Chair, it's under the ministry, so we'll see to that and ensure that payment is affected. Thank you.
Who would pay the amount of money in six months if the whole amount is not collected?
The community, the Community Development Department will pay the money, but the ministry will ensure that that payment is made.
Auditors, take note.
Thank you.
The minister has guaranteed that the amount, this money will be paid within six months. If not, the ministry will be taking care of this amount. The Department of Community Development. The Acting Director. Madam, the recommendation over here is, we recommended that the Acting Director should ensure that the accountant collects the total rent of 75,453 from the staff involved, failing which the Acting Director and the accountant should pay. So auditors, minister is saying that we should give them six months. The Acting Director, whether you are still with us or not, you will pay this amount of money. You just saw the IGP who just left and the head of prisons here, so I can always call them back.
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
The next infraction is on paragraph 1784, and Honorable Duke Oferata will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. The infraction withheld taxes not remitted to GRA to the tune of 3,788. The auditors noted from the review of financial records that withheld taxes amounting to 3,788 for the supply of goods and services were not remitted to the Commissioner General. Management, you accepted the recommendation. What is the status of this funds?
Honorable Chair, withheld taxes have now been duly remitted to Ghana Revenue Authority, and evidence of payment has been attached, and copies have been given to the auditors. Thank you.
Auditors, can you please confirm?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been remitted to the GRA.
All right, thank you. The next infraction is on paragraphs 1788, and Honorable Shirley, Chair, will take care of that one.
Thank you. This infraction is to do with unearned salary. The auditors noted that.
I'm sorry, it's at the Office of the Head of Local Government Service.
Yes. Okay, so the auditors noted that during their payroll records.
Who have, whoever joined us? Have you, have you taken the oath? Okay, then, please take the oath before you can answer any questions.
I.
I, Professor Lord Mesa.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, you are welcome. Introduce yourself to the committee.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. I'm Professor Lord Mesa, Head of Local Government Service, please.
Thank you very much. Madam Shirley, continue your questioning, please.
So the auditors noted that Madame Gloria, who went on a study leave for 16 months, failed to resume duty upon completion of her course on 18th December 2024. And this resulted in an unserved bond and an unearned salary of 103,153.94 Ghana Cedis. Madame Gloria has refunded 50,000 Ghana Cedis into the auditor's general recovery's account. The auditors have recommended the Chief Director to make sure that the remaining 53,153.94 is refunded and paid into the Auditor General's account, or her guarantors pay same into the account. Can you please help us with the status of this recovery?
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. As we speak now, the 53,153.94 has been paid on the 7th of August 2025.
Auditors, can you please confirm the payment?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph 1792. Official vehicle not accounted for. Where is that Land Cruiser? Western Regional Coordinating Council.
Honorable Chair, this was a vehicle that was being used by the former Regional Minister. And he came to Accra to the Office of the President and got a new vehicle. But when he was coming, he didn't come with documents for the new vehicle, and he also didn't come with a letter confirming that the old one had been received at the presidency. So that is the status, that was the status then. And after this issue came up, we've written to the Office of the Presidency for them to confirm receipt of the old Land Cruiser and also issue a letter allocating a new one to us. But we still haven't heard anything from the head of the Office of the President.
Madam, when was the letter written?
Honorable Chair, we've written two letters. One was in 2023, and then a reminder was sent in 2024, please.
So the former Regional Minister took the Land Cruiser that belonged to the Western Regional Coordinating Council? Is that it?
Yes, sir.
And he brought that Land Cruiser to Accra?
Yes, sir. Yes, Honorable Chair.
And he came with another vehicle?
Yes, Honorable Chair. So it was as if it had been exchanged for a new one.
Uh huh.
Yes, Honorable Chair.
So the new Land Cruiser, where is that one?
That is what, that is what the current Regional Minister is using.
And there was no transfer?
No, Honorable Chair.
And you wrote the letter in 2023?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
And we are in 2025?
Please, we sent a reminder in 2024, and.
Is that how you guys write reminders? You wrote it in 2023, then you waited for a whole year before you wrote a reminder? So now the vehicle, you have the vehicle, but it hasn't been transferred yet?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
So when are you? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to find out, this new vehicle that is in your possession, do you have documents with that vehicle?
No, Honorable Chair, we don't.
So if somebody comes up tomorrow and say the vehicle belongs to that person, what do you do?
Honorable Chair, that's why we wrote, in fact, most of the vehicles that come to the RCCs don't come with documentation. So in our letter, we requested that an allocation letter be sent to us, and then documents on the vehicle be sent as well. So as a result, we are unable to get insurance for the vehicles or even roadworthy. So the Regional Minister's vehicle has no insurance and no roadworthy certificate.
Madam, what is your position now there?
Please, I'm the Acting Regional Coordinating Director.
Do you have a copy of this report?
Yes, Honorable.
Have you seen what is written on our paragraph 1795? See, let's read 1794. It says, "Management indicated that the vehicle was taken away by national security operatives, but without formal transfer documentation for review." Now, you said it was a minister who took it, but not, they are saying over here there's national security.
Yes, Honorable Chair, that is what the Audit General's report is saying. But the management letter and the response management at that time gave was that it was the minister that brought the vehicle to Accra.
Now, the recommendation was, we recommended that the Regional Coordinating Director should retrieve the vehicle from the national security without further delay or be held liable, and will be held liable to pay for its replacement cost. Have you retrieved that vehicle?
No, Honorable.
So madam, I think if we held you liable for the vehicle, you'll find a way of retrieving that vehicle. Because you wrote the letter in 2023, you waited to 2024 to write a reminder. It looks like we are not serious about the vehicle. That is my feeling.
Yes, Honorable, I think these were attempts by management at that time. And I assumed office about a month ago.
Who, you took office about a month ago?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
You see, ladies and gentlemen, if you were not there when this thing happened, when you are invited, bring the person who was there. It looks like we are shilling people who create all kinds of malfeasance, and they move on. Who was the Coordinating Director at that time?
Honorable Chair, he's indisposed.
Madam, that wasn't the question I asked. This is a simple SHS question. Who?
He's Mr. Fred Ajemane.
Fred Adomakun?
Ajemane.
Fred Ajemane. And where is he? He's indisposed, but has he been moved to another ministry or? Or is he on?
Please, he's on sick leave.
Madam, did you drive the vehicle to Accra today? You said you are using, the vehicle is in use now, the current one. That's what the Regional Minister is using.
Yes, Honorable.
Should I assume that that is the vehicle you came with today?
Honorable Chair, no. I came by flight, so.
So you used the car in Western Region?
Yes.
You drive it?
Yes.
With no insurance and no roadworthy?
Honorable Chair, that is an anomaly that we've identified, and we are trying hard to rectify that.
So should you drive that vehicle and the unfortunate happen, what would you do?
Well, Honorable Chair, this is a challenge that I've come to meet. And every effort is being made to correct it. Because that's the only vehicle available to me, and that's the circumstance that, you know, the RSC is faced with. We are doing everything possible to have it corrected.
Do you actually need the original documentations before you can have a roadworthy and insurance covering the vehicle?
I think so. I think that you have roadworthy and insurance, the vehicle's primary documentation should be in place.
Have you bothered to inquire from the DVLA in whose name the vehicle is registered? Because one, it has a chassis number, and secondly, it also has a number plate on it. Have you tried that option?
No, I've personally not tried that. We've not done that. But like I said, she came in, like she indicated, the previous director has been indisposed for some time. And she came in recently. So we've been sitting down, looking at all the issues around in this matters. And we believe that very soon we'll have it, you know, corrected.
I believe kindly try that, Elisa, to give you an indication as to who exactly the vehicle is registered in the name, so that you can target your approach as trying to find the documentations rather than driving a vehicle that is not insured and also not roadworthy certified.
Honorable Chair, I think that's something we are going to do, but the the issue here, as she indicated, is a certain system in place where vehicles that have come through to the RSCs have not come with documentation. And I think that is something that we have to, you know, rectify. So that going forward, any vehicle that is released should come with some documentation so that all the other things we need to do as in getting insurance and all the others we're able to do.
Honorable Minister, the Western Regional Minister at the moment, if he wasn't a Regional Minister, he'd be arrested by the police by driving a vehicle, no insurance, no roadworthy. Now, we have a Regional Minister over here. God forbid, something happens, the car doesn't have any insurance. Is that how we are treating our ministers?
Honorable Chair, as the Regional Minister has indicated, the Ministry will liaise with them to ensure that the right thing is done, since he said they are working on it. Thank you.
How much a period should we give you since for two years hasn't been done? So with a new team involved now, how long would that, do you think we should give you to rectify this issue?
Honorable Chair, this is a matter that I believe we can get resolved by close of year. By close of year.
Close of year?
Yes.
All right, I'll give you that, Honorable Minister.
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Are the next infractions on paragraph seventeen ninety-six. And Honorable Abner Osayasa will take care of that one.
Yeah, Chairman, thank you. Thirty... Yeah, this infraction, thirty-two staff of the Regional Coordinating Council live in government bungalows without paying their rent. The amount in default is one hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and eighty-eight cedis. The auditors during their work also realize that you didn't have a rent ledger to track defaulters. Who would like to know, or let me ask that I would like to know, first, the state of government bungalows in the region. Secondly, whether you've been able to recover the said amount.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. My name is Narirepo Berjere David, the Regional Coordinating Director. To answer the first question, the state of government bungalows. I can see almost seventy-five to eighty percent of the bungalows we have in the region are in such a deplorable state that requires maintenance. Now, the other aspect of it that has to do with the default payment. Indeed, the RCC is initiating a lot of measures to see how to collect these rent areas from the default staff. One of the measures we have adopted after I came into office and realized that this problem existed. Indeed, let me mention that the then Regional Coordinating Director in whose presence this report came up is late. And so I came in barely a month ago and met this problem. And so what I'm trying to do to solve the problem is I've asked my HR to do a data collection of all the staff affected for us to know their affordability levels as far as the payment is concerned. So when we know the affordability level of every staff, we'll be able to have an undertaking with them for at least the payment of whatever each individual owes to be spread out for a period of at least six months so that they can pay it to government as expected. This is what we are trying to do, Honorable Chair.
Yeah. Head of Service, welcome, Prof.
Thank you, Honorable.
Yes, Chief Director, Director of RCC, do you believe that the rent you collect, the ten percent rent, basic rent that you charge officers that occupy these bungalows, do you believe that this rent can actually maintain these bungalows? I say this because...
Honorable Member, Honorable Member, that is a policy from Minister of Finance. But whether it's enough, that is not their issue for them to talk about. Honorable Member, this is a case that we've gone through several times at Public Accounts Committee.
I know. I'm also helping. I wasn't there.
Okay.
You understand, I wasn't there at that time. I'm also helping them. Because I was a DCE before. We build new bungalows and allocate to staff and charge them that amount of money, very meager. So that money cannot actually, you know, maintain the bungalows. So it's an issue that if I'm helping them or they can say it here, then all of us as policymakers, we can help them. The reason why, the reason why I've not been able to maintain is because the monies that are charged, honestly, cannot maintain the bungalows. That is one of my observations. So if I'm bringing it out, it is for all of us to help them. Whoever parties, whichever parties that we can table, we table it. There are many things we see around this table that are not captured here. And when someone is making his point, you want to come and stop the person. It's not fair.
Honorable Member, you are out of order. When it comes to policy, we, the parliamentarians, we don't make policy. It's for the executive. Let's move to the next one, please. The next one is paragraph eighteen oh-two, and that is Honorable Brymer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the said paragraph relates to an unserved bond. And all just noted that one Silla Skufi Mokla was granted a four-year study leave with pay. However, they said Mr. Mokla did not return to post after completing his study. And so he was required to refund an amount of ninety-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five dot five six pesos Ghana cedis. Asal is paid to him for the four-year period that he undertook that course of study. The auditors also noted that management could not provide Mr. Mokla's bond, bond forms for perusal upon request. So the recommendation was that the Regional Coordinating Director should recover the total amount of ninety-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five dot five six Ghana cedis with interest at a prevailing Bank of Ghana rate to be paid into the Auditor General's recovery account. Regional Coordinating Director, have you been able to collect this money?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We have not been able to collect the said money from the said officer. That not withstanding. We have written to Iyoku to see how Iyoku can help us in tracing the officer concern so that the appropriate measures will be taken for the collection of the money. Thank you.
Director, one thing of interest to me is how we could, I mean, why could we trace the forms? The bond forms, which is a necessary prerequisite for any employer to be given or to be awarded a study leave with pay. So that if we had the bond, we had the bond forms here, we know whom to, I mean, to fall on to be able to locate Mr. Mokla. So how come he was given studied leave and then the bond where the guarantors signed to guarantee for him were not with your office?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. In fact, we have not lost hope in tracing the forms. We are still making strenuous efforts to see how the forms can be obtained so that we can get the appropriate information to act.
Director, after how many years? Because this infraction, I think this report was in twenty twenty-three. And after now, the forms, and then I believe the approval for the study leave was granted somewhere twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And after now, you don't know where the forms are.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Like I said, I have just come in and I'm putting in a lot of effort to see how this can be addressed.
Do we take it that now you don't even know the guarantors who guaranteed for Mr. Mokla?
For me, as an individual, I will say I don't know them.
As a coordinating council?
As a coordinating council, the forms will help us to be able to know who the guarantors are.
And where are the forms?
That's what we are tracing for.
Chairman, something is missing somewhere.
What is?
Oh, yes, something is missing somewhere. How do you grant a study leave to an employee? And now you can't even trace the bond forms? It's in transit to where? So I think the approving officers at that time should be held liable if we are not able to find who approved this bond in twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. It's the head of the local government service at the time.
Prof, the ball is coming to your court.
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
So maybe you could be of help?
Yes. For local government service, we report through, I mean, Honorable Chair, for local government service, we report through the structures. So at the regional level, if they are not able to find copies of the forms, my Chief Director just whispered to me that we have copies at the headquarters.
So you have copies at the head office? So can that be shown to the auditors, please?
Yes, we should be able to do that, Honorable Chair.
And on it, you find the guarantors?
Yes. Usually it comes with a bond.
Yes, and then we can go after them for the money?
Yes. So next level, what we're looking at to prevent future occurrence of such things, we want to commit the guarantors as well.
All right, Honorable Payton.
Chairman, my question will go to the management. They indicated here to the auditors that they've requested for the copy from the local government head office. I want to know, do they have a copy of the letter that they've written to or they wrote to local government service indicating that truly they requested? Do they have a copy of the letter? And has that letter shown to the auditors?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Yes, we have a copy of that letter here. It was dated sixteenth October twenty twenty-four.
But Chief Director, if they had this letter at your office and they... No. If they wrote a letter to local government services twenty twenty-four and you didn't get a response, whom did you address that letter to?
The head of service.
In twenty twenty-four?
In twenty twenty-four, Honorable Chair.
And you didn't get a response?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
But now it looks like they have the letter?
Honorable Chair, that is why I said that we are making follow-ups. That's one of the areas that our focus is on to be able to be assisted.
Okay. Follow up with it and then let's see how it goes. We are giving him thirty days. I mean, he can find out where the letter is, the copy of the the bond, and then inform the auditors about it, show it to them, and then we'll follow up on trying to get the guarantors. Thank you very much, Prof, for letting us know you have the letter.
Land Use and Special Planning Authority Kumasi, are they here? Okay. Mr. Kujoyebua, you said. That's my uncle's name. So when you mentioned, I lifted up my head to see whether it was my uncle sitting there, but I realized this is a different Kujoyebua altogether. There's an unserved bond term for one Elisa Abakofi of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-four. Can you please give us an update on whether you have carried out the recommendation from the Auditor General?
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Management, we've made several attempts to recover this amount, but unfortunately, our efforts have not yielded any positive results. And consequently, we sought strategic advice from the Public Services Commission how we'll be able to recover this. We were advised to contact Iyoku. We advised to contact Iyoku, which we officially wrote to Iyoku on the 24th of June 2025. Iyoku also informed us that they need some critical information in order for them to investigate the issue, which we have provided to them. So we believe that Iyoku will be able to investigate and recover this amount for us.
For this particular person, do you have the form?
Yes, please.
So you know the guarantor?
So we provided the guarantors everything to you.
But why didn't you contact the guarantor yourself? Or you have done that and it didn't yield any results?
Yes, we contacted them, but it didn't yield any results.
So to them, what's the essence of guaranteeing something for somebody? If you just fill that form and you don't bear the responsibility should the person refuse to, refuse the terms stated in the bond? Now, what's the use of a guarantor?
So, Honorable Chair, we've realized that the bond forms, there are some things that we need to do further. So based on that, what we are doing now is, after you've signed the bond form, we ask you to also give us a consent letter. Because at times you contact the guarantors, they will say that, hey, we never knew that this should be the issue, though they have signed. But the consent letter will indicate that they have reconceded to the bond that they have signed. So going forward, that is what we're doing now.
Well, but I'm thinking that whoever signs the bond clearly has consented to the consequences of this or anything that happens on the face of it. So must you get a consent, must they fill another consent letter before they take responsibility for those who break or renege on these bonds? Just before you came, we had the interior minister telling us how they are carrying out issues like this. And so I asked that honorable minister, you speak to your colleague, the interior minister, to see if he can help you also get in touch with Elisa Abakofi in the way they are handling this, which we believe will bear some fruits for us in the end. But you also have to follow up with Iyoku. You don't just say, I have written to Iyoku, I have done this, and then you fold your arms and sit here and look at us. You will have to also follow up with Iyoku and find out from them what they are doing. You have provided them with the information, the relevant information. So we need to see them working. And so, sir, you have to find out from them. And next time, I know it will appear here again because you haven't redeemed or solved this infraction. But next time, you will need to come with an update, a clear update of you clearing the bond, or you will be surcharged as the auditors have provided.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair.
Department of Social Welfare. Yeah, here, yes. Unaccounted revenue, 14,210. We're told this money was supposed to be lodged in the consolidated fund, and it wasn't, within 24 hours, and it wasn't. So I know you have come to tell us that beyond a year, you have paid all the monies into the accounts. Because this was supposed to have gone into the accounts within 24 hours of collection. And so give us an update on it.
Honorable Chair, the monies have been paid. But the problem that we had was that the day they came for the auditing, our accountant called and traced the pay-in slips that very day. So she promised that she would look for it and then send it to them. So she called the auditors, and they agreed that they will come and have a look at the pay-in slips. But unfortunately, they didn't come. Then early this year, the auditor called me that if you don't bring the documents for her to have a look at it, she will bring us here. So I told the accountant, who is now on retirement, that quickly you should go and show the pay-in slip documents to them. So she met the auditor. But unfortunately, again, the auditor couldn't get time to look at the documents. So we've paid the money. Uh-huh, yes.
So Audit Service, can you confirm if you have now seen the document, validated the document, and so this can be taken off their books?
Honorable Chair, we would have to... We got this today. We'll have to do the validation and get back to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Public Works Department, Greater Accra, unrecovered debt of 29,226. And it's in respect of rent records of six tenants occupying the department's warehouse. The total debt was 49,000, and 20,000 has been paid. So the outstanding amount is 29,000.
Honorable Chair, please, this particular one is not under Ministry of Local Government, Chief Tansin and Religious Affairs. It's under Ministry of Works and Housing.
PWD is not under local government.
No, Honorable Chair.
Remember in August when we met them? Yeah, they said it was under local government. So we had to step the questions down. We met Works and Housing in August, and they said the PWD was under local government. And so we had to step the questions down. Are they not part of the assemblies? They are part of the assemblies.
Honorable Chair, PWD Greater Accra is under the Regional Coordinating Council, Greater Accra.
So are we not speaking to the right people?
Honorable Chair, I think you are.
Are we not speaking to the right people, yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. So proceed to answer the question.
Honorable Chair, we'll seek your permission to go back and then contact the Greater Accra Regional Coordinating Council and then get back to the committee. Thank you.
Minister, I'll blight. But there's another one from the Western Region. That also has to do with building, operating, and transfer agreements between Messrs. Electroland Ghana Limited and Rick Pat Company Limited. The infraction here is that you entered into this agreement without appropriate approval. If you have the document, it's on page 464. Can we give them one of the auditor general's reports? Page 464. But the technical people from local government, didn't you know you were coming to answer these questions? This is a public document. This is not a document that we produce here. This is a public document. And you should go through to check all the infractions that you have been cited for. It's on page 464 of the report. You see Ministry of Works and Housing, but we all know that the Public Works Department is under the Regional Coordinating Council. And that's exactly what Ministry of Works and Housing told us the day they came in here.
So, Madam Chair, I think that we got the set of questions from the Office of Parliament. But unfortunately, this particular one was not captured in the letter that came to us.
And what I'm saying is that this document is not a secret document. It's a public document. So it is also your responsibility to go through and check whether even what we have sent to you is adequate or not. But I will, like I told the minister, we'll allow it to, we'll step this down and ask you to go and prepare and come and answer these questions. There's another one still under Western Region, Public Works Department, unremitted revenue to the consolidated fund of 50,081 cedis. 50,081 cedis. And the auditor is recommending that the regional engineer should ensure that the head of accounts transfers the money into the consolidated fund. So Minister, there are three infractions here on page 464 and 465. And so we ask that we'll give you another date to appear before us to answer these three queries.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We'll come back with the answers.
Minister, my chair tells me you are done, but I have one question. I want to know the role of DICEC in the various districts? The role of the district's security? Yeah, I want to know the role of DICEC in the various districts.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I think that DICEC is actually put in place to ensure that security is adequately maintained at the district level. And so wherever there is conflict or there are disturbances, then the DICEC will come in and see how they will mediate to ensure that peace prevail. That is their basic role.
That's their basic role?
Yeah.
And so they write reports. And when they write the reports, who do they send the reports to, please?
So normally, the reports of DICEC go to the REDSEC at the regional level. REDSEC will normally review the reports. And if there are any follow-up actions to be taken, then they take it up and resolve some unresolved issues at the district level.
Okay. And so we all know, last week Friday, an incident happened in Etewa West. And a member of parliament was handing over a completed astrotiff to the community. The district chief executive, who is under the Ministry of Local Government, through DICEC, said by handing over that facility, it will create tension, and so they won't allow the member of parliament to do that. They brought in national security, they brought in the police to stop it. I believe this has come to your attention. Can we hide under DICEC to do some of these things? Something as simple as handing over a completed astrotiff? Honorable Minister, the DCs are under you. And we are your colleagues. We expect that they cooperate with us as we also cooperate with them. But we cannot hide under reports. That's why I asked whether, where does the reports go to? So when they write these reports and it gets to the next stage, do they even come to check or verify some of these things? How does handing over a completed astrotiff bring tension between one party and another party? Respectfully, Minister, I expect you to address this issue. This is not, shouldn't be an issue that is just on social media, but an issue that you should address as colleagues, not here, but as colleagues. You should address it properly. Because today, it is somebody, tomorrow it might be you. And we don't want the NDCs hiding behind reports of DICEC to do things that are certainly not the situation on the ground. With this one, I don't expect you to respond, but I was just sharing with you the sentiments of the people of Etewa West. This was a simple handing over of a completed astrotiff. And we expect that you take this matter up and do the needful. And also, let's not use this to bring or to create fear and panic. Because we have lived peacefully with everybody, and we expect that to continue, even an NDC government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Just to add a little, this issue has come to the attention of the ministry. And my honorable minister, Honorable Ahmed Ibrahim, has invited the DCE to come and brief him as to what went on. So you'll get a report from that. Thank you.
And I also want, hoping and looking forward to a clean and bright country. As I saw your minister announce, was it two days ago, that we should give him some time and that we will see a clean and a brighter Accra and Ghana? So we are waiting and hoping, marking time. And at the right time, we hope that will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. And that is definitely going to happen by the grace of God. And coming Saturday, the 4th of October, is National Sanitation Day. We'd want to urge all Guineans, wherever you are, you have to be involved in the Clean Up Ghana exercise. Do not open your shops till 10:00 a.m., when the exercise is complete. Security will be out there. And the sanitation issues are part of the guidelines for the MMDCs. And so every MMDC is going to be marked on their clean districts. And so we are going to ensure that Ghana is going to be clean, Accra will be bright, and all other districts will be bright. Thank you.
Minister, this is free opportunity, free advert for you. But thank you very much for attending upon us.
Madam, thank you. You are discharged.
Thank you.
Do we have Minister of Agri? Okay, come on up, please. It's Minister of Agri here. It's Minister of Agri here. Do you have the minister here?
No, please.
What about the deputy?
The deputy too is not, he's travelled out.
Okay, and we may have to reschedule this meeting. Because we need either a minister or a deputy minister here with you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Minister of Agri, is this the first time you are attending upon the Public Accounts Committee?
No, please.
So then, why do you know what is expected of you and then you do something else? Because you always come with the political head and then the principal spending officer, which is your chief director. And so if the minister or deputy is not in? Respectfully, we are all serving our nation in different capacities. Let's attach seriousness to what we do. We called your minister, your minister is not here. It's the same with the AG Minister for Justice. They also refused to attend upon the Public Accounts Committee. We are all doing, or they also failed to attend upon the Public Accounts Committee. We are all discharging our mandates in different capacities. Let's respect each other's mandate and do what is expected of us. We will have to reschedule you. But there are also other equally important things that when you do this, you throw our program off board. And so we don't expect this to happen again. So tell the Minister for Agri that we expect to see him or his deputy heading the delegation. And it's the same with the Attorney General and Minister for Justice. He should come or his deputy should come. That is how we address queries. Or that is how that is what the protocol is when parliament calls you on the auditor general's reports. It is given, it is what is done every time. And I don't expect that under this government, they want to do anything different. Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we've come to the end of the we've come to the end of the day. Tomorrow, we are expecting Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Creative Arts, Ministry of Trade and Agribusiness and Industry, Ministry of Environment, Science and Technology, and Ministry of Transport, all tomorrow. Thank you very much. And the meeting has been adjourned.